Good afternoon. I'm going to call the meeting of March 1st, 2011 to order. Would you please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Council, Agency Member Francisco.
Here.
Hotchkiss.
Here.
House.
Here.
Rouse.
Here.
Self.
White.
Mayor, Chair Snyder.
Here.
Item number one, Employee Recognition Service Award Pins.
Want to start with Terry? Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I was trying to say, go right ahead.
Mayor Snyder and members of the City Council. As you know, every month we present service award pins to employees who are celebrating important anniversaries with the city. And March must have been a busy time for hiring people because this is about the longest list I've seen in a while. But I want to read their names into the record. And then we have one employee, Terry Brown, who's here to receive a 25 year pin. So first with five years, Michelle Sanchez, who's an accounting assistant in finance, Nicole Moore, building inspector, inspector aid in community development, Crystal Bedoya, a police officer, Gary Gaston, police officer, David Thornburg, senior real property agent in Public Works, Michael Clunin, senior engineering tech in Public Works, and Autumn Malanca, who's a water resources specialist in the Creeks Division in Parks and Rec. With 10 years, Barrett Hoffman, a fire captain, Trevor Jones, fire engineer, Brad Waters, fire engineer, Matt Wilson, fire engineer, Rob Jensen, fire engineer, Chad Hunt, who's a sergeant in the police department, Susan Young, neighborhood and outreach services supervisor in Parks and Rec, and Kathy Sullivan, who's a marketing coordinator in Parks and Rec. With 15 years, our finance director, Bob Samario, Sean Mapes, who's in automotive equipment tech in Public Works, Carlos Lamas, who's a meter reader in Public Works, and Roger Tussignot, who's a control systems operating specialist in Public Works. With 20 years, Leaf Reynolds, who's a project engineer two in Public Works, but I think you know is out at the airport, John Booth, street maintenance worker two in Public Works, Georgia Lopez, street maintenance coordinator, who's, I call her our graffiti queen, and Fernando Benales, who's a street maintenance worker two in Public Works. And with 25 years pin is Terry Brown, who's a recreation supervisor in Parks and Rec.
Okay, now come on up. Teresa Brown began her career with the City of Santa Barbara as a temporary employee with the Parks and Recreation Department Youth Activities Section. She served as nature camp counselor and later as a nature camp director before being hired as a permanent part-time assistant recreation supervisor in March of 1986. Terry's responsibilities as an assistant recreation supervisor included oversight of after-school program and after-school enrichment classes. In 1991, her hours were increased to full-time and her oversight grew to include tee-ball and minor league baseball, girl softball, and discovery camp. She organized volunteer activities and special events, including Halloween, Easter egg hunts, and the Tournament of Champions. In 1992, Terry started the first teen programs for the department. She went on to develop numerous day camps in the Junior Counselor Training Program. And in 1999, she was an integral part of developing and implementing the state grant-funded After-School Opportunities for Kids, or AOK, program with the Santa Barbara School Districts and city-funded Recreation After-School Program, known as GRAP. In 2005, Terry moved to programming cultural art classes but returned to youth activities, becoming the youth activities coordinator and eventually a recreation supervisor in 2007. Terry's a fourth-generation San Franciscan who was raised in Santa Clara and moved to Santa Barbara to attend UCSB, where she graduated in 1983 with a BA in kinesiology. Terry met Peter when working at youth activities, and they were married in 1999. They live in Carpinteria, along with her two children, John Kyle, 22, and Courtney, 16, who attend schools locally. Terry enjoys fitness, yoga, skiing, running, reading on the beach, movies, and vacationing in Lake Tahoe. It is my pleasure, Terry, to honor you today for your 25 years of service to the City of Santa Barbara. On behalf of the City Council, we congratulate you on your admirable achievement. Congratulations.
Thank you. This is indeed a surprise and an honor. All of my school district colleagues are here, Robin Swawski and Debbie Badger, Sharon Roth. Gosh, the joint use agreement with the City and Santa Barbara School District was huge for youth activities. We had 10 elementary after-school programs and three junior high programs and three free summer fund programs. And without the cooperation of the school district and the support from City Council and the funding for those programs, we would not be serving the thousands and thousands of children in my 25-year career. Just with the school-based and district partnership programs, we serve 1,400 children every single day who otherwise would not be enrolled and engaged in programs. So I am very, very proud of that, and I'm very, very proud of the respect that the City and the school district have for one another. It's not a common thing for cities and municipalities and school districts to work together as closely as we do, and it's just such an honor to have my colleagues here. Of course, my youth activities family's here as well as my adapted programs family. Just regarding when I first started with the department, I was paid $4.80 an hour as a nature camp counselor. And I was so pleased to have that job because of the training and the certification that was required and the driving the vans around. Steve Wiley's kids were in our programs. And so many people in the community who now were in our programs, who have moved on, Salud Carvajal, he was our lower Westside Center Director, and just so many principals and teachers and coworkers who were either staff or came through our programs, who are truly the backbone and on the front line of everything that we've done in youth activities. Of course, Sarah, I was going to mention that many, many years on freezing cold March mornings at 4:00 a.m., when we would be tapping dads in their sleeping bags and waking them up and giving them their little tickets that they could have a spot for their children in our summer camp programs. And the days when we were the only show in town and our programs and our staff spoke for themselves. And now we are so overwhelmed with summer and youth and family programs that I'm very, very proud to say that Parks and Recreation, all of my colleagues who work so hard, have still, to this day, from where we started with our original day camps to where we are now with, who would have thought 25 years ago, engineering with Legos would be the hot ticket? So it's been an amazing few years. I'm energized. Kimmy Coley, my associate, who's also like a sister to me, is my backbone, as well as all the staff who are on the front line delivering the promises that we say we're going to bring to the public. And then our frontline staff, who are so talented and so skilled to make me a better supervisor every single day, to continue to deliver programs to these remarkable children who come and, you know, they come for free. There's a demographic that is so above and beyond any municipality. Santa Barbara's, if it's not perfect, it's very, very close. And I'm very honored, and I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there aren't, Madam Mayor.
Okay, moving on to public comment. I have two minutes up at the podium here. We'll start with Kenneth Locke, will be followed by Jane Breckwald.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I was just doing a little brainstorming. I was thinking that what the city should entertain is a holistic health advisory committee. So form a committee. There's probably people in this community that would like to get involved that are in holistic health practice and would like to help this community become holistically healthy. Now, what I'm, well, my expertise in holistic health is in relation to primarily the arts, but then also through tennis. And actually, I'm here in this community not actually working right now, but I should be working. Right now, this community does not value, apparently doesn't value the health, holistic health, does not value it at all. So I'm not working, I'm not teaching tennis in relation to it being holistically healthy because this community, again, does not value that prize. And right now, what I can do for the community, for the holistic health people, is actually provide them with a standard in relation to the mind-body integration and what should be beneficial to all the disciplines, like yoga and Pilates and Tai Chi and all exercises so that the kids can actually develop a holistically healthy relationship with their minds and bodies in relation to all these disciplines. It would be really interesting to actually make this a reality in this community. Thank you.
Jane Breckwald will be followed by Frankie Morris.
My name is Frankie Morris.
Okay, so I'll hold on to that then. Thank you. Frankie Morris will be followed by Andrea Rastamon. Brenda, you have some stuff. There you go.
Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, as a library patron and an art historian, I protest the proposed changes to the library plaza. The plan to make it consistent with the Granada Hardin would bring in elements incompatible with the Spanish Revival Library Building and violate the most basic principles of design. The idea of removing walls to make the area level is nonsense since there is a six-foot drop in elevation from the library's main entrance to the corner of the site closest to La Arcata. The RDA specialists spent $15,000 for survey work but failed to mention this inconvenient truth. The suggestion that leveling would connect the area with the art museum is ludicrous since the only part of the museum facing the plaza besides wall is a garbage and loading area. The vote cast on 15 February was gained by claims that the landscape offers cover for criminals. Although the plaza's design is spoiled by a two-foot boxwood hedge and the raised beds around the fountain, even this dumb wall of greenery, even with this wall, there is not one spot that cannot be clearly seen from either the street or from the walks bordering the area. Go look for yourself. The food service kiosks that were proposed at the meeting would provide more cover for criminals than anything in the plaza today. This decision, besides destroying a perfectly serviceable plaza, deprives the state of money to be used for schools at a time when the Santa Barbara School District is facing the possible loss of up to about 90 teachers. Please halt this awful waste of public resources. Thank you.
Andrea, did she, I think she left, oh, there you are, followed by Jeff Bard. No, Andrea's here.
Let's see. Well, I was just going to comment on, because I missed that meeting last week, or about the Cabrillo Ball Field or Rainbow Park. Well, yeah, I think it's ludicrous to take out the rainbow. I mean, we can just, like, paint over it. That, I mean, that's what some people call it, Rainbow Park, not Cabrillo Park. But also, yeah, I think it'd be fun if maybe you could have, like, maybe one-day miniature golf or some kind of, you know, every day a different activity, or you can rent it out to the community to do, like, sometimes yoga in the summer, to do, like, yoga workshops at Cabrillo Ball Field. I don't think that, I think the basketball fields isn't that good idea. And I also think, I think it's really sad about the stuff, the lawsuit with the channel keepers, but I don't know if it's, I don't, I mean, I've gone to their events, but I don't really know what their thing is, but I think maybe it's because of the, when they had the Halama, no, the, that last, not the Halama, the last surfing contest, there was like a beach closer, but they were having a surfing contest. And I think they, I mean, there was a surfer killed at a Royal Borough beach by a gangbanger, but, well, that has nothing to do with it, but we need to keep our surfers, like, not sick because there was a beach closer at Royal Borough that day on Ledbetter and, what's that beach where they just had the surfing? Yeah, you know what I mean. A little bit south of Carpinteria. Well, anyway, so my name is Rastamon, and peace and love, not a bomb. Some people think I'm a thugger, but I think I'm just a tree hugger. All right? Have a beautiful day.
Thank you. Jeff Bard, and the final speaker will be Jeff Gerard. You made it within your two minutes, Andrea. That was good.
Madam Mayor, distinguished members of council, today, as you know, is Common Ground Registry Week. We're up at 3:00 a.m., and I'm gratified to see Councilman Francisco's involvement, Councilman House's involvement, and Councilman Rouse's involvement, and I believe some of the others too, and of course, our wonderful mayor gave a great speech. One of the objectives I'd like to put in next year is an education component for tobacco control, green behavior. They're in the creek. Personally, it doesn't bother me, but I don't want one cigarette butt in that creek. I attended the Central Coast Roundtable, which includes Monterey County, Slow, and Santa Cruz, and next year hopefully will include Santa Barbara County. A new report was unveiled, which indicated that cigarette butts hold toxins. This is bad for the fish, it's bad for the dolphins, it's bad news all around, and it's not good for our tourist industry. I have consulted with some MDs and I am, and I talked to Mike Foley, and I want to roll out a plan to attack cigarette consumption and cigarette abuse by homeless people, particularly users of congregate shelters. And I hope that some of the people that have been highly critical of some of the behaviors of homeless people will get on board with that. So education in clean and green, and let's attack the cigarettes because some of the worst obnoxious behaviors are cigarette smoking, and it's not good for our watershed. As per discussion, I went to Galita City Council and with the leadership of Mayor Connell and Ed Easton and Paula Perate and Mike Bennett, we were able to get a matching grant, not quite as much as Santa Barbara, but we did get some money for Dr. John Key and her very excellent staff. So again, thanks for rolling with it. I think we all need to have a good sense of humor because these are tough times and tough issues, but we'll work it out. Thanks again.
Thank you. Jeff Gerard will be the final speaker.
Hi there. I'm Jeff Gerard, and I'm an activist. I've been an activist for 10 years on equal rights issues and liberty issues. I'm here in Santa Barbara, learning about the safe parking program because I'm living out of my vehicle. And I began doing that by choice last year, and then I became unemployed last winter, and then it sort of became necessary for me. And I'm here just a few weeks to learn about the safe parking program as an activist, as a blogger. One of the things I'm concerned about here since I've been in Santa Barbara is, this is the first city I've experienced where to access the gym I use, I have to worry about paying for parking. And we have 75 minutes free, and after that, of course, it's $1.50 each hour. So far, I haven't been able to get out before the 75 minutes each time. And what happens is if I get charged $1.50 every time I go to the gym, it then doubles my gym membership. So what I would hope that the City Council would consider is some sort of way to extend the time for people using gyms who are utilizing the parking by the city. Because there are cities across the nation that are struggling with obesity epidemics, and they are, you know, trying to get funding for programs to combat obesity. So it would seem counterproductive to me to be, you know, having to worry about parking. Some folks have told me that there is parking a couple blocks away from these structures. I haven't been able to find parking, and of course, if that's the case, other gym members would be using them too. And it certainly doesn't burn many calories to walk a couple blocks to get to your gym place. But if you're a person of limited mobility, if you're starting out to try to lose weight, I'm a chunky guy. It's not easy being a chunky gay guy because, you know, you got all these body image issues and y'all don't know. But so anyway, I'm trying to lose weight, and I just, as an unemployed person trying to lose weight, would not like to worry about the extra burden of having more fees piled on to my existing gym membership. And even though I'm living in a vehicle, I still got other bills too. So thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Move on to the consent calendar. I believe some items to read. Go right ahead.
Item number three, proposal to allow alcohol at Carrillo Recreation Center for special events, including recommendation B, that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara permitting the consumption of alcohol in certain city-owned public areas and repealing resolution number 08-057. And item number five, accept grant funding for construction of Mission Creek Fish Passage Project Phase One, including recommendation A, that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara authorizing the Parks and Recreation Director to accept grant funds from and execute a grant agreement for $1,290,000 with the California Department of Fish and Game Fisheries Restoration Grant Program for the Mission Creek Fish Passage Project Construction Phase.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. Anyone need to take anything off the consent calendar, or is there a motion?
Moved consent.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes. Thank you. A report from the Finance Committee, Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Finance Committee met today to discuss the possibility of using RDA funds to purchase a building on Placido Street that would be used, managed by CADA as a detox facility. And we also had several members of the public from the neighborhood there expressing concerns about it. We decided that the best thing to do was rather than simply recommend that we go forward with the project, instead, the committee decided to recommend that the full council pay a site visit and that there be one more neighborhood meeting to make sure that we've heard from everyone in the neighborhood and had an opportunity to answer any of their questions before going forward.
Okay. So will that be coming back to Finance Committee or just to the council?
Just to the council.
Just to the council. Okay, thank you. Item number 11.
Item number 11, contract for construction for the Fire Station Number One Administrative Office Building Project, including recommendation E, that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving and adopting the findings required by the Health and Safety Code, Section 33445, for redevelopment agency funding of capital improvements to the Fire Station Number One Administrative Office Building Project.
Thank you. Mr. Hagmark. Mr. Kelly.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers.
Is your mic, is your mic on? There you go.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, my name is Joshua Hagmark. I'm the principal civil engineer overseeing the Fire Station Administration Building. I have a short presentation for you today, just kind of going over and summarizing where we are with the order of this construction contract before you today. Just a little site map showing the project site location. The building was formerly actually a garage for repairing fire stations back when it was originally installed and used in coordination with the fire station. And it is located 925 Chapala, right across from Lot 2. In, just a little background, in June 2006, council directed staff to move forward with the preliminary design that was actually for a fire campus, which included the Fire Station Number One and the annex. There was escalating costs due to construction going with the economy, and the project was split into two phases. We moved forward with phase number one, and in order to do that, the fire administration, which was in the main fire station, was relocated to 925 De Lavina. In September of 2009, we wrapped up construction of the main fire station, and in 2009, council kicked off phase two. The annex building is fairly straightforward. It's an office building. It will have roughly about 15 staff there permanently. The main staffing will be fire prevention, however, the fire chief and some of the battalion chiefs will also be located there. And we will retain the fire station equipment storage, which is at, towards the back of the building. I think one of the biggest benefits to the city in completing this project is getting out of the lease of 925 De Lavina. That currently is $21,000 a month for that facility, and the timeline for that expires in 2012. And so this project will be wrapped up in time for that lease to expire, and so it'll be great for the city to get out of that. The office spaces will be about 4,200 square feet of office and then about 4,500 square feet of storage area. Here's just kind of the rough layout. There's Chapala Street to your left, and the frontage or the offices will be, and in the back is the garage, garage area. And here's just the general frontage of the building. Just a rendering by the architect. And as you've read through your car, there is a bid protest that has been filed on this project by the second-low bidder, Melchiori. At the heart of this, there are three documents that are involved, and it's the Contractor State Licensing Board and their rules and regulations, the California Public Contracting Code, and the city's specifications for the project. Melchiori, I mean, to summarize, there's 240 pages of correspondence back and forth that we've had with Western and Melchiori. And basically, to summarize it, there's the four issues here, that Western does not have the appropriate license, it does not list enough subcontractors, it's planning to substitute products, and the bid contains irregularities. Staff has investigated all of these assertions made by Melchiori, and based on review of all the information, staff recommends rejecting the bid protest by Melchiori, waiving all the minor-bigger irregularities, and awarding the contract to Western Group.
Thank you. Any questions first from council? Okay, seeing them, we'll move to public comment. I understand the attorney representing Melchiori asked for five minutes, and normally I give two, but I'll allow that, and, which then means the attorney for Western can match the same time, just to be fair. So Gene Molenkov, if you'd like to come on up, and you'll have five minutes here up on the podium.
Thank you so much. Actually, my name is Gene Molenkov. I'm vice president of Melchiori Construction. Christine Molenkov is our general counsel, and she was unable to be here. I'm going to read a letter that was written by Mark J. Melchiori, president of our company. He was unable to be here, but he asked that I instead read it, and it will not take five minutes. Thank you. Honorable councilwoman and men, Mayor and attorneys Wiley and Ostringer, Melchiori Construction Company would like to take this opportunity to thank the City Council of the City of Santa Barbara for allowing us to address the issue of the bid protest filed by our firm regarding Fire Station Number One Administrative Office Building, project bid number 3608. I am personally sorry I could not be here to address the council, but have asked Gene Molenkov, I vice president, to read this letter based on a previously scheduled conflict. Over the past two months, Melchiori Construction has regrettably been involved in this bid protest for the Fire Station Number One. Please know it is not typical for our firm to engage in this type of process unless, as an organization, we feel strongly about our position on the matter. In fact, Melchiori Construction Company has protested in only three similar circumstances in the history of our corporation. Two were at the University of California, Santa Barbara, and one for the County of Santa Barbara. In these cases, our bid protests were successful in removing the low bidder for nonresponsiveness of their bids. However, please note that in these cases, the infractions by the original low bidders were far less extreme than those of Western Group Incorporated. It makes us pause, as it should the City Council, and question how the city's process is being handled, who is handling the process, and the corresponding impact to all contractors and vendors who invest the time, energy, and money to bid the projects for the City of Santa Barbara. The Public Contract Code is clear, and any deviation should not be allowed. Compliance with the Public Contract Code ensures all contractors have a fair and equitable opportunity to bid the projects competitively and responsibly. After all of the correspondence back and forth between the City of Santa Barbara's Public Works Department, attorneys for both parties, and reviewing the bid and contract documents, Melchiori Construction Company continues to feel strongly that Western Group Incorporated has simply not met its burden establishing its ability to perform the work necessary for this project. Substantial unwavable bid irregularities rendered their bid non-responsive. We also believe city staff has violated the Public Contract Code for bidding and award of projects, and an investigation should be mandated by this council as to the procurement processes and criteria for a responsive competitive bid. By virtue of the city staff's recommendations to the City Council today, city staff obviously feels different. is in strict adherence with the bid and contract documents developed and administered by the City of Santa Barbara, and even more importantly, Western Group Incorporated proceeds with the construction of this important project as detailed specifically within their council's letters of rebuttal and clarification. In the spirit of cooperation, and because of our relationship with the City of Santa Barbara's Fire Department--
You have 30 seconds.
--we have elected, after discussions with them, to forego the writ of mandate solely based upon our willingness to allow this project to move forward. Please note, had we based our determination upon the matter in which the city attorney, Mr. Wiley, responded to us during conversations regarding this matter, we would have made a far different choice. Notwithstanding this, Melchiori has elected to monitor the project for full and strict compliance by Western Group. Any material deviations?
Let's wind up, please.
In closing, thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
And I do have copies of this letter for you, Mayor, and--
Okay, if you could just hand that to the clerk, that would be great.
Thank you so much for your time.
David Polinsky. Five minutes, five seconds if you need it.
Thank you. On December 14, 2010, Western Group submitted a bid in the amount of a little more than $1.89 million and was the low bidder for the City of Santa Barbara Fire Station Number One Administrative Office Building project. Melchiori has submitted its bid protest citing numerous grounds, which relate primarily to allegations that Western failed to list all of the subcontractors who would be performing the necessary work on this project, and that Western itself was not licensed to self-perform the remaining unlisted work. Those assertions are false. Western Group Incorporated is a Class A general engineering licensed contractor, a Class B general contractor, and a Class C-10 licensed electrical contractor. Western has properly listed all of the subcontractors who will be performing in excess of one-half of 1% of the total value of the work, as required by the law. The subcontractors listed are properly licensed and certified to perform the work for which they were listed. Western did not list subcontractors who would be performing less than one-half of 1% of the work to be done. It was not required to do so under Public Contract Code, Section 4100 et cetera. Western did not list its material suppliers. It is not required to do so under the law. Melchiori challenged Western's right to propose substitution of materials. The specifications in Public Contract Code, Section 3400, not only allow a subcontractor to propose materials that are equal to or better than those specified, but encourages such proposals. In a letter dated January 3 of 2011, Melchiori submitted to the city engineer, Melchiori stated, "All of the items in its bid protest are material to performing the work and completing the project." That is also false, as an example. Melchiori cited Western for having a date of December 7 on the bid proposal, on Western's insurance coverage, and on Western's bidder noncollusion declaration. The date was correct. It reflected the original bid date set for bid opening of this project, a date which was requested to be postponed by Melchiori. None of the bid items cited by Melchiori are material. Most of them, in fact, do not exist at all as bid deep fix. In fact, in that same January 3, 2011, letter that Melchiori drafted to the city engineer, Melchiori itself admitted, quote, "Melchiori has no knowledge of Western Group Incorporated's capability as it relates to completing the work of the project as described." Melchiori's protest smacks of a dissatisfied bidder combing through Western's bid proposal to unearth either inconsequential technicalities or nonexistent violations in the hope of undermining the bid award. Western requests that this conduct not be rewarded. Nonetheless, Western recognizes that bid protests such as this one are necessary and important aspects of the public bidding process. Western recognizes that this process is an integral part of the checks and balances which ensure protection of the public fisc. We welcome Melchiori's statements that it will monitor the upcoming project for compliance, as is their right to do. We appreciate the opportunity which the council has given us to personally address these matters. Western's principals, Cian Shabo and Mayor Levy, are here today to vouch for the integrity of both Western and its bid to the City of Santa Barbara. We thank you for your attention and for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, there are no more speaker slips. I'll close public comment. It's to the council. Don't all speak at once. Mr. House.
Just a question for staff. In looking at this, there were, I guess, a number of items that were cited by Melchiori's company, and would you just give us a little description of the kinds of things and how staff is coming to the conclusion that they're not of great substance?
Councilmember House, yeah, there was approximately, over the period of the last two months, 20 items that were brought up, a lot of them repetitive of one another, and that's why we kind of summarized them in these four statements here. You know, the irregularities were exactly that. The date of the first bid opening, which got postponed, was on the proposal. That did not negate the proposal. It did not negate their bonding for the proposal, their ability to walk away from that proposal. They could not walk away from. And so those are some of the irregularities that we were looking into as far as the minor regularities. Western's plans to substitute products, that is typical on any public works project. We have strict specifications as to what we're looking for, and we tend to help bidders along. We tend to say, this product has been approved. They can use that product or seek out a product of equivalency. So the fact that Western, in their bid, is approaching this with another product is fine. The question is, if we don't approve that product, they have to hold their price to provide a product that does meet our needs. And that, I think, is very significant. No matter what, the city will be made whole, and we will get a product that meets the specifications as we've stipulated. And the appropriate license, as Western's attorney stated, Western has significant amount of licensing. They are well qualified to do this work.
Okay. So you didn't find anything that was significant at all after looking at these? The quality of the work will be upheld by the standards that are established as part of the contract requirements?
Correct.
And, okay, I'm just pushing a little bit here, because it sounds a lot from, I don't think she stayed, but the lady who made that presentation for Melchiori, that they felt very strongly that this is a big deal. You know, there were some really significant differences here, and I am having a hard time seeing them, given what you said. Anyway, thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to add to that, is that the standard of practice in the construction business, and after consultation with a consultant, and our own internal significant experience going back many years, and also just the experience of the last four buildings, the last three buildings that the city has built, we have had protests similar to this. And so the whole issue of the substitution of materials is standard as part of the practice of construction. But the city, and this is very important, is that the city carefully polices that we maintain that no contractor has a material benefit over any other contractor, and that is something that is ascribed to us or given to the public governing staff to protect all the contractors, that when we review the bids, we have to make sure that no bidder has an advantage over the other. And we do that by holding the contractors to their bids. We police it very carefully. We believe that we have policed the contract for the airport terminal, for the Correo Rec Center, for the fire station admin building, which also have all had similar protests, including the issue of the substitution of materials. So as far as the issue of the city being able to monitor this and police this, we feel very confident we have, and we feel very confident that we have not given any material benefit to any other contractor. This is a fair and reasonable competitive bid.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, first of all, I'm supportive of staff's recommendation that the council move ahead with awarding the contract to Western Group. And I'm also grateful and relieved to hear that Melchiori is proposing to monitor its strategy or its way to move forward, because clearly, this project is needed, and it's also the timeliness of it is very important. So when appropriate, I'd be glad to make a motion to that effect. Then I would move that the council waive the minor bid irregularities and reject the bid protest of Melchiori Construction and authorize the Public Works Director and Redevelopment Agency Deputy Director to execute the contract to Western Group as outlined in the staff report.
Okay, so items A through F. Mr. Hutchus. Sorry, second, I'm sorry.
Second.
Second, okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Melchiori's letter maintains there were, quote, "substantial unwavable bid irregularities." Got any idea what he's talking about?
Madam Mayor--
What was the key word there, I think?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Hutchus, yes, I'm very familiar with those, and they're very carefully identified in the correspondence between Melchiori and Western and the city. And we could go into substantial detail, as in these 200-some pages--
Well, but he deems them unwavable. Obviously, you don't. Is that correct?
That is correct, and with the consent of the city attorney's office, correct.
Okay. So it's just a matter of interpretation, one side versus the other, about wavability here, if I can put it that way?
Mr. Wiley.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hutchus, the Public Contracts Code and through it, the city charter, has this concept of, public contracting has always had this concept of, you can't waive something that provides one of the bidders with a substantial advantage over the other bidders. And so that's how we've approached this. That's what the law requires. And whether you call this 12 items of protest or 20, as staff indicated, some of them are duplicates, we've looked at this in great detail over a period of at least two months. And it's clear to us that none of the things that Melchiori alleges the city is waiving have provided with Western any kind of advantage in their bid or might provide them with some sort of advantage. For example, this requirement that you list subcontractors, unless they're less than one-half of 1%, sometimes that allows a general contractor, the bidder, to, you know, play one subcontractor off another. And that would provide them with a material advantage. That's why the state public contracting code says, no, you list all of your subcontractors and you use those subcontractors unless the city were to agree to substitution. So we've got that here. I guess my point is, we've gone through this in detail, and there is nothing here that had provided Western any advantage in their bid or would give them some sort of advantage or ability to abuse the process as they're effectuating this contract. We're pretty sure of that.
Thank you. Question for staff. This drop fallback position that Melchiori has adopted would apparently support what the city attorney is saying. But they're talking about monitoring the project. Is that a problem for the city?
Not at all.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I see no more lights. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Madam Mayor--
Uh, what? Mr. Wiley?
Could we clarify? That includes the resolution, the agency resolution.
To the motion, it's the A through F, right? The motion, including A through F? Okay, let's try that again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Item number 12.
Item number 12, appointment of ad hoc council subcommittee on police station building needs and financing.
Okay, Mr. Casey.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Our recommendation today is that the city council appoint a three-member ad hoc subcommittee to help address police station building needs and potential financing mechanisms, and then report back to the full council within 90 days. We did a work session with the full council in January, talked about the status of the locker room remodel at the police station building, and how that project has kind of spiraled out of control due to a number of building deficiencies of the entire existing police building. Those deficiencies include seismic structural performance, the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems, electrical and plumbing issues, compliance with the American with Disabilities Act, a poor roof, lead and asbestos issues, once you start to address some of those issues, parking in contaminated soils. And what we identified is just doing the locker room remodel could lead to a project in the cost of the magnitude of about $25 million. And so we then talked to the city council this work session about the need to replace and bring up to modern codes and requirements the police station to meet the needs of the police department, and looked at a number of different options for that. And that includes rebuilding on-site of the existing police station, looking at other city-owned properties that we could build a police station, and even looked at some private options, including the possibility of the post office maybe coming on the market at some point. The consensus of staff, and I think the council at the work session, was that the most logical choice seems to be rebuilding on the existing police station site. And so the challenges are, how do we move forward with developing that proposal, and more importantly, how do we move forward with financing such a proposal? Because we do not have adequate resources, either in the general fund or in the redevelopment agency budget, to pay for an entire new police building. And so we're back here today to get your consent to move forward with a council ad hoc subcommittee to help the city staff kind of plan and move forward with the process. We really feel it needs council leadership, because most likely, it's going to require approaching the voters at some point to ask for some additional financial assistance, and then also wanting to make sure that we're developing the plans and taking the concept of a new police building in the right direction to meet the council and the city's and communities' needs going forward. So we're asking for a three-member ad hoc subcommittee to work with staff, and then we would report back to the full city council within 90 days about recommendations about how to move forward. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions? Or any volunteers? Oh, there we go. Oh, I see, I see, 1, 2, 3, 4. So, right. Well, that makes it more difficult now, doesn't it? So Mr. Rouse, Mr. White, Ms. Self, and Mr. Francisco, and Mr. Hutchus, okay. Did you? No, he wants no part of this. I'm teasing you.
I happen to have a part of it, but there were others that were more outspoken the first session, and I thought they should have first shot at it.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I withdraw my candidacy.
Okay. Well, that makes it easier. So we have Ms. Self, Mr. White, and Mr. Rouse. So is there a, could we just move that by acclamation, I guess?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you. Good luck, and get some good, we look forward to hearing your report in 90 days. So, all those in favor, for councilmembers House, White, and Self to serve on the ad hoc subcommittee, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Francisco, for making that easier on us. Good luck to you all. Okay, that was, that's probably the easiest thing you're going to do about this item. We'll move on to item number 14, 13.
Item number 13, Plan Santa Barbara, general plan update.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we'd ask for a motion to approve the Plan Santa Barbara.
Nice try. It's not--
I figured I was on a roll, you know? No, John Ledbetter will give the presentation.
report in 90 days. So the, all those in favor for councilmembers House, White, and Self to serve on the ad hoc subcommittee, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Francisco, for making that easier on us. Good luck to you all. Okay, that was, that's probably the easiest thing you're going to do about this item. We'll move on to item number 14, 13.
Item number 13, Plan Santa Barbara, general plan update.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we'd ask for a motion to approve the Plan Santa Barbara.
Nice try, it's not.
I figured I was on a roll, you know? No, John Ledbetter will give the presentation.
Okay, Mr. Ledbetter, as soon as you're ready.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, good afternoon. I'm John Ledbetter, principal planner, and I'm managing the Plan Santa Barbara process here. Project, I should say. The agenda today is to outline for you of how we would like to approach the soliciting your direction on Plan Santa Barbara. That's really the main thrust of today's meeting. But we're also going to discuss some of the issues that were raised through the subcommittee, the ad hoc subcommittee meeting, as they relate to those bigger issues that have been discussed thus far. Just a quick review of where we are today. All of the documents that were reviewed in quite a bit of detail in July and August through your briefing, seven meetings in total. That was followed by the planning commission recommendation and the EIR certification in September, over two meetings. And then at that point, it returned to you for deliberations between October and November. There were three meetings. And what came out of that, in large part, was a narrowing of the issues. And as you'll see in Attachment 3 to your council agenda report, those, in effect, really summarize those narrowing of the policy languages. A lot of them focused on circulation, some of them housing, some of them on the introductory format, that sort of thing. And then at that point, there were still a few large issues, and you initiated the ad hoc subcommittee to try and tackle some of those issues. In November, they met three times. And then the item, Plan Santa Barbara, was brought to a vote in November, at which time it didn't have the five votes required to adopt. So at that point, the subcommittee was reconstituted, and in January, and in January, two, there held two meetings, of which I'll report back now on some of those specific issues. However, before I get into those specific issues, some of the details of that, again, trying to frame for you a way to approach the next phase and how we can address the next steps, the direction that we need to proceed. So the first one is issues to be addressed. And what are the key issues that you, the council, still feel needs to be addressed in order to get us to adoption? Clearly, the multifamily densities are still big. That was a lot of the discussion that went on at the ad hoc subcommittees, as well as the location of those densities, and particularly, the employer rental overlays. They really are a locational issue, as well as a density issue. Some of the other issues that we feel were not as pressing were the adaptive management program, which I'll get into in a moment, about how that could be dealt with during the first phase of implementation, as well as the unit size issue when we come to you back with ordinances to implement the plan. However, you know, maybe that's not all the issues that are outstanding. And maybe there's some more deeper issues here with the sustainability framework itself and some of the general plan goals. And if that's the case, it would be very helpful if staff knew that upfront so that we could plan for that and address it appropriately. So what types of approaches should we address these key issues? And to date, it's been with the full council and with the ad hoc subcommittee. And, you know, but there are other approaches as well. We can go back to the planning commission for further input, we can have further community outreach, or we can come back to you with a completely revised work program of a different set of options. So that's really, you know, your choice here, and we're trying to make that clear so that we can get the direction that we need to move forward. And then the schedule, you know, what is a reasonable timeline, given the approach that you choose to take? One or two more subcommittee meetings would seem reasonable, and then returning to the council in May for final direction and adoption in June. That certainly would be doable. Other options, extending the process further, and again, or a completely revised work program. So with that, just sort of keeping that in mind, I'll touch on a few issues that have been raised at the ad hoc subcommittee, starting with the density issue. And, you know, the density issue really hinges on this concept of the average unit density program. And to replace what was on the book, what is on the books today, variable density program, which is based on number of bedrooms and has contributed to some of the construction of these larger condominiums and in turn, some larger buildings. So that really is one of the primary purposes of the average unit density program. Also, part of that is, in doing so, to encourage more employer rental housing, to encourage more affordable market units, relative as it may be, and to encourage housing in key locations. In other words, not just more housing anywhere, but in those key locations adjacent to transit, adjacent to open spaces and commercial services. Here you see those areas of the city where residential development is possible. We take away the, yellow here is all the single family. No changes are being proposed at this time in those areas. So that leaves you with medium, high, which is essentially the duplex, and then medium density, medium, high, and high. And you take away the medium density, there's no changes being proposed there. You're left now with medium, high, and high density. Medium-high density is equivalent to the variable densities we have today, 15 to 27 dwelling units. So you're really looking at these areas. This is the areas where change is being proposed. Higher density is being proposed in these red and dark yellow areas.
White has a question.
Thank you. Mr. Ledbetter, you said the medium density, is that what we would call the R2 zone?
Yes.
That's the R2?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So these are the areas that the change is being proposed. So you're looking at a higher density here, and then on top of that, there would be a rental overlay, depending on where that locations, where those locations ultimately land. And I have a map showing what's been proposed to date on that as well. But it's key, it's important also to keep this in perspective. We have 35,000 units on the ground today in the city built. What's being proposed over the next 20 years is approximately 2,800 units. What we've seen historically over the last 10 to 15 years is about 100, 125 units a year. Now, with the economy the way it is now, and as Councilman Francisco has stated, it'll probably be considerably less than that, at least in the next five years going out. So you're not going to see a whole lot, a huge wholesale amount of big, huge developments going on over the next 20 years. These are the locations that are being proposed, but you've got to keep it in perspective of, how much is that next increment that's being proposed? Again, 2,800 over 20 years compared to the 38,000 that are on the ground today. No changes in the single family, no changes in the duplex. And so the question is, do you want to see these higher densities, and where do you want to see them exactly?
Mr. House has a question.
Yeah, Mr. Ledbetter, just to that point, real quickly. So, but what, I'd be sure it's really clear. You're not saying development wouldn't happen anywhere else in the city. There would be single-family dwellings being built in some places, and there would be duplexes other places. But they would all be within the existing framework of density, or, I mean, the existing zoning. And nothing's really proposed to be changed in those other areas. But there would be development in those other areas.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilman House, thanks for that clarification. That is exactly right. There would still be development in the single family, in the duplex zones, but there's no changes being proposed at this time in those areas. No increased densities in those areas. It's only in that.
For those areas where there's, where there would be an increased allowance, if you will, for units, it's almost like an incentive or encouragement somehow to concentrate any of the, I guess, larger projects in those particular, in those particular areas.
That's correct.
And larger, maybe relative, because it's not like large amounts of land that are available. Okay, I just wanted to understand that. It's not only in those areas that development's going to happen. It would be throughout the whole city, and the emphasis would be on that center core.
Change areas, yeah. I'm trying to focus the, focus on the change areas right now. So in terms of density, existing densities we have today, in these multifamily areas where you would see the change, we have a base density of 12 to 18 dwelling units, and there's no change proposed in that. The variable density, of course, is what is being proposed to be changed. That's our incentive program, which allows up to 27 dwelling units per acre. So the variable density would be split, if you will, between the medium, high, which essentially keeps the existing densities we have today, but much smaller units, therefore much smaller buildings. That's key to understanding that. And then there would be, on the other end of it, the high density, where you would be allowed to build up to 45 dwelling units in very selective locations. And then finally, building up to 67 dwelling units per acre for only rental and employer housing in very selected locations. So in nutshell, that's what's being proposed. Now, it's important for people to understand sort of the two linchpins of the average unit density program. The first one is, this is an incentive-based program that allows for greater densities in trade-off for smaller units, and therefore, smaller buildings. That's the main trade-off here. And then the other part is the flexibility aspect of it. This is something that we've heard time and again from the developers, that you need, they need that flexibility to be able to help subsidize these smaller, more affordable units. They need to be able to build bigger units with, you know, say, on the top floor that have the views in order to help subsidize the smaller ones. So if you look at this sliding scale here, this is a good example of what's being proposed for the medium, high. And here you see that a developer can select anywhere along the sliding scale that fits their project needs, from 15 dwelling units per acre to 25. So let's say, for example, they choose, so the idea then is, for the, the greater the density, the smaller the unit. So for the biggest units, they get less density, and for the smallest units, they get the greatest density. So that's the incentive part. Now, the flexibility part is the average unit concept. So let's take the top, the top tier here of 13,000 square foot, 1,300 square foot units. And so the average has to be 1,300 square feet. So some of the units could be 2,000 square feet, some of the units could be 600 square feet, as long as those 15 dwelling units per acre average out to be 1,300 square feet. Same thing, as you go through, whatever the developer selects along the sliding scale, you've got to work with the average for that specific density. Again, 1,800, excuse me, 800 square foot units, like some could be 1,500, some could be 400, as long as the 25 average out to be 800. So again, it's that flexibility that developers need, and those are the sort of the two key components you've got to keep in mind when you're thinking about the average unit density program. So what the ad hoc committee asked us to do was, well, what about some visual examples? I mean, what is this going to look like? I mean, take some, so what we, what we proposed was to look at some existing buildings and then look at some prototypes that we would draw and build from scratch to get a sense of how this average unit density program would work in terms of trying to encourage these smaller, more dense projects. So for existing buildings, you know, the idea would be to maximize the number of units that could be developed, and there'd be, we'd look at various unit sizes, but focusing on the subcommittee suggestions, which were for somewhat larger units than were proposed originally by the planning commission. And then they would be within the existing building envelope or floor area ratio and within the existing parking. So we looked at four different, four different existing buildings that we thought fit the profiles the best. 101 West Annapremoo, Casales Fuentes on Castillo and Correo, the Andaluz Project on Chapala Street, and then 121 West De La Guerra Street. And without going into a lot of details, and you, all the details are in your staff, in the council agenda report, it's just important, I think, to touch on sort of the takeaway, the summary here. And the existing densities for these existing buildings were between 17 and 54 dwelling units per acre, and of course, the highest one being the Casales Fuentes Project. But what we found is, we could develop this range, between this range of 29 to 54, depending on the unit size that's being used and the parking constraints that are being applied to these existing buildings. Most of these projects were built with two spaces per unit, and those mixed-use projects that were within the downtown zone benefits had the most flexibility, obviously, because of the parking allowances. But the big takeaway here is really, additional units and smaller buildings could be developed if the units or sizes are smaller and the project is parked at one space per unit. You know, that's kind of the bottom line. So now, moving to the prototypes, that we ask an architect to help us with this and draw up some rough sketches. And again, these are not perfect sketches, they're not the most beautiful sketches, according to just one of the comment letters we got. But they do give you a sense of what can be achieved with the densities that are being proposed. And what we tried to look at here, building from scratch, was what would be the biggest buildings you might see under this average unit density program. So we looked at four different scenarios. The first one was the medium, high, with this rental overlay, and that gave you a loud density of about 37 dwelling units per acre. We looked at the high-density market rate project at 45 dwelling units per acre, the high-density with the rental overlay, employer overlay, and the same thing, but with the coalition's criteria, both of them at 67 dwelling units per acre. So this first, this first scenario here was, this is the site plan, and you can see on the site plan that we were able to get the required 15 percent, or 10 percent, let's see, how much, I think it was 15 percent. How much open space was that, Pity? Yeah, it's 15 percent open space on the corner, and then 950 square feet of commercial. And what we found here was that these unit sizes that the subcommittee asked us to use were 1,200 square feet. The parking was at 1.5 spaces per unit, and the commercial was one space for 250 square feet of floor area. And that produced eight units for this particular project at 35 dwelling units per acre. So this is what, you know, it would look like, three stories, about 40 feet in height, with an FAR of 1.67. The next one we looked at was the high-density market rate. And again, all of these are built on what's referred to as a podium. In other words, it's covered parking with open space in the front. And this is, these are larger, now we're getting into what typically you might see more in the downtown, a bigger lot. This is a half-acre lot, whereas the other one was 10,000 square feet, or about a quarter of an acre. And you've got the 10 percent open space in the front and a commercial on the ground floor. For this one, the unit sizes we used were 900 square feet, parking again at 1.5 space per unit, and for the commercial, because it would be in the downtown area, one per 500. This yielded 22 units at a density of about 44 dwelling units, dwelling units per acre. Three-story high building, 36 feet high, and FAR of 1.7. And then for the high-density rental employer overlay, the unit size is here about 750, parking one space per unit, one for 500 on the commercial. This yielded 33 units at 65 dwelling units per acre. So this is, you know, one of our densest projects here. And the elevations here show that, in fact, we push up into the fourth story for one portion of the building, 50 feet in height, with a FAR pushing two, 1.94. And then finally, the same criteria applied to the coalition's criteria, and really, everything is held constant except that the unit sizes shift. And instead of being a constant 750 square foot unit, you'd have two, some would be 1,000, some would be 600. And again, same parking, one space per unit, same for the commercial, one for 500 square feet. And this would also yield 22 units at 65 dwelling units per acre. But the difference here... here is that you'd get four stories and 47 feet in height, but a slightly larger FAR. Now you'd be at a 2.14 FAR as opposed to a 1.94 FAR. So again, just in summary, the takeaway here is, you know, larger unit sizes were used for these prototypes than what the planning commission recommended, and the maximum proposed densities were achieved, but with some of them having four stories. The parking range between 1 and 1.5 spaces per unit, but again, it's a similar story that with the existing buildings, additional units and smaller buildings can be developed if the unit sizes are smaller and it's parked at one space per unit, as was recommended by the planning commission. So turning now to the overlay, I'm not going to discuss this in great detail, but just to give you a sense, by looking at this map, where the discussion was left off in terms of where these overlay boundaries would fall. So these dark blue lines indicate that, you know, primarily it's in the downtown area, some part off of Milpas here, and a portion up in the Upper State Street as well, and some other outlying areas here. But again, there's, you know, really wasn't any discussion at the ad hoc subcommittee about the overlay, but clearly, this is something that needs to be resolved. Adaptive management program, you know, this is a very multifaceted program that runs across the whole document of the general plan and is applied to everything from water to traffic to affordable housing. And again, it's the same methodology of setting objectives of what you want to see over the next 20 years, or even shorter timelines, monitoring that, and then evaluating, and then adjusting based on what you find from those evaluations. So in terms of densities, you know, really, the idea is to test the effectiveness of these increased densities. And you look then to the objectives, and you know, we outlined, I mentioned some of these objectives earlier, you know, reduce building heights, increase rental employer housing, more relatively affordable market rate housing, and locating housing at key locations. Are we achieving this, you know? That's the whole idea of the adaptive management program as applied to these densities, would give us that tool to see how we're doing in a shorter timeframe. And, you know, what's been discussed thus far at the ad hoc subcommittee was, you know, either having a finite number of projects or a number of units. We'd have to confer with the city attorney as to how exactly we could structure that, the cleanest way to do that, but certainly, some form of that is possible. And then finally, just the other considerations that have been raised at the ad hoc subcommittee. One of them is the idea of the limited equity co-ops, and that they should be considered and added, like so many of the other potential implementation actions, like second units, those are to be considered in some future date. We're not proposing them today, but they should be considered. So it's been, was discussed at the ad hoc subcommittee, limited equity co-ops should be considered at some later date. And again, the concept of the all-residential density incentive, that would be a consideration for the future as well. And then lastly, it's individual council member concerns. We've had a fair amount of those, both from Councilman itself and from Councilman Hotchkiss, about particular text edits, questions, further questions for discussion, you know, and then there's been some interest in further research, just in general, about planning concepts. So these are areas that, you know, individual council people have concerns about, but we need to hear from you as a group, as how you want us to address those issues as staff. So again, bringing it up back to where we started here, looking for that council direction, clear direction is what we need. What are the key issues that you need to have addressed prior to giving it the check and adopting this plan? How and where should these issues be resolved, and what's a reasonable approach, given your, what's a reasonable schedule, given your chosen approach?
Thank you. We're going to have questions, we have a number of public comments before we get into where we go from here. So questions first, Mr. House?
Just a quick question, Mr. Ledbetter, if you'd take us back to your slide 33, it was on density. And it came up earlier, but I just wanted to ask a question about, it had to do with the, we referenced the planning commission's recommendations on the number of parking spaces per unit that would be required. Two pieces that, one is, that's not a maximum, that would be a minimum. No, which way is it going? Maximum, so, no, they could put, they could build a property with as many parking spaces as they want, it's just that they could have more of the smaller units if they were to provide less parking.
That's correct. If they wanted to provide just one space per unit, they could do that, and that whole concept of unbundling would be part of that. But again, the language is, shall consider, we'll come back to you on that. I think, Ms. Wees, do you have that language right there in front of you?
Thank you.
Ms. Wees, go ahead.
And Councilmember House. The planning commission, as a result of discussions with the council in the summertime, their recommended policy was changed from, at one time, it was to consider maximums of 1.5 parking spaces per unit. The 1.5 was removed, stating, rather than having a specific standard, the recommended policy at this point is to consider parking maximums, create motor vehicle parking requirement maximums for new development within the high-density mixed-use commercial areas. So it's a very general, consider creating maximum, it doesn't state a specific number. So whether or not the program would allow just a minimum and any number of spaces, or whether or not this policy would be implemented along with it, establishing a maximum is yet to be determined.
That would be something for a future conversation. In this case, it's, the additional units would be tied with the program being based on a certain number of parking spaces per unit, so that would be tied up together with the approval process, right?
Correct. We would certainly start with a minimum, and then there would be a subsequent decision as to whether or not there's also to be a maximum.
And then the one thing that doesn't seem to be mentioned here is that this, first of all, this would be in those areas that are the red areas that were on the map, right, Mr. Ledbetter, the ones that were proposed for the changes in the density?
Yes, that's correct.
And then, so it's kind of the downtown areas and the area out near La Cumbre and on Milpas Street. Doesn't, I know there's a lot of concern about what people would do if they had more cars that would fit in that one space, isn't the complementary piece to this kind of an approach, that the on-street parking, that residential parking permit program that we have, for instance, would not be available to these new developments? And that the city would not be selling parking spaces in our parking garages or making accommodations? In other words, there's sort of a complementary set of things here, right? I mean, otherwise, you would have people who would maybe have two or three cars or something, would be out on the street, parking out the streets, but these are 75-minute and 90-minute parking areas, and we would not be allowing a residential parking permit program for these, I mean, at least that's my understanding.
Mr. Dayton's going to answer that.
I'll let Rob Dayton answer that, our traffic expert.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, that's correct. In fact, with all the developments that have been going in, new developments that we're assuming are providing all their parking within the downtown, we are restricting them from receiving residential parking to park within the 90 minutes. And what we're looking at is that the 90 minutes and the 75 minutes within the downtown are commercial parking spaces that we need to have available for the businesses downtown that need to turn over, and to have them occupied all day by residents, it would not be a good use of that space.
Great, that just, that confirms it. So it seems like when we do have those conversations about the number of, and this is perhaps to Mr. Ledbetter as much as to you, Mr. Dayton, but it's, when we do talk about these things, those things are connected, they need to be mentioned, I think, or at least talked about together, because we've heard a number of people give us commentary in writing and here at the, or here in council chambers, of their concern that what that really would do is, in fact, park out our streets and be a detriment to the businesses and to the existing residents in the neighborhoods if we were to do something like this. So anyway, just something to raise as an issue. Yes, Ms. Wees?
Yes, and again, keeping in mind the parking policy that is recommended is parking management. Manage parking downtown to reduce congestion, increase economic vitality, and preserve Santa Barbara's quality of life. That is the policy. Underneath the policy, there are a number of parking programs to be considered, including the potential for the parking maximum. As Mr. Dayton just stated, there is a recommended program to continue with restricting the use of the residential permit parking for any project in this incentive program. There's the unbundling that has been discussed as a possibility to consider, as well as a policy that the zoning ordinance could be amended to allow off-site residential parking. At present, that requires a parking modification if you were to lease a parking space off of a separate property. So again, when parking's being discussed, the overall policy is for management and making it work in the downtown, and these are different ways to consider how to do that.
And I know we have a lot of speakers, but just the commercial, in the commercial zones that we're talking about, for commercial development, the requirement for parking is one space for every 250 square feet of commercial development? Is that correct, Mr. Dayton?
Downtown, it's one, it's two per thousand.
It's two per thousand, so it's one per 500.
And then for residential, it's currently one space per residential unit with no guest requirement.
And do we have any place where we balance if the commercial property were developed 100% commercial, as its zoning would allow, of course, compared to if it were developed in this mixed-use arrangement that you're showing us on the screen today? What's that differential? And do we ever, in any place, do we take into consideration the difference between the 100% commercial, you know, like an office building, and its parking impacts or the traffic impacts that could happen in the city, versus if it were developed in this mixed-use residential-commercial configuration? Do we, I mean, it seems like the one has a significantly different impact in terms of traffic than the other would. Do we ever bring that up or talk about it in here?
Mayor Schneider in response to Councilmember House. The downtown parking requirement for residential units is one parking space per unit, and that applies in mixed-use projects in the downtown. In other parts of the city, if you have more commercial space than you do residential space, then there is a different calculation of a mixed-use parking standard. So it is true that most units are larger than 500 square feet, and since in the downtown, it's essentially one parking space per 500 square feet, I think what you're getting at is that more parking is required, the more commercial space you have.
Well, no, it goes just one more step further. And the reason I'm bothering you this right now is that when we talk about these things, we get reactions and responses, and I'm trying to field them on my computer and my own office. So if the same area that is now red on the map, that's commercially zoned area, if a parcel were developed as 100% commercial, which they could just come in and do it, I mean, they'd work with our staff and go through the project, they're going to have some kind of traffic impact in our town. And they're providing parking to deal with part of that, you know, where you store the cars, and they're going to have turnover. If that same property were developed with a, as a mixed-use property, where you had commercial on the ground floor and you had the residential above, like you just showed us here, it appears to me that it would have a significantly lower impact in terms of traffic in our community, because residential uses so much less of a resource, traffic resource. And of course, the parking is a requirement there, too. So, and maybe to Mr. Dayton, am I accurate in that understanding? And where do we mention it? Do we talk about that in our document here?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, you are accurate. I really prefer that in the conversation, that you keep parking and traffic separate, because they just, it gets really confusing if you start mixing the two.
Okay.
But you're right, and the retail and commercial space per square foot generates far more traffic than a residential unit would in the equivalent amount of square footage. What we did find in our investigations of the downtown and with the model that we were built specifically for the downtown is that if we add residential uses within the downtown core, it is the best place to develop in terms of the least amount of traffic impacts. Is that where you're getting it?
Yeah, I think, and I guess maybe there's some sort of an offset, that when a commercially-zoned property is developed as a residential mixed-use property instead of 100% commercial, it appears to me that area just has had a reduction of its potential impact on the community. And I haven't found out where that's referenced or talked about very much, and yes, I see I got mixed up in terms of parking and traffic, and maybe when we get there in this conversation, you can help us untangle that a little bit more. But it seems like that's a pretty important thing, because we keep having people talk to us about, we're putting so many people in downtown, you know, with these high-density projects, and yet each one of them tends to, in my mind, reduce the traffic impacts in the community, and I don't know where we talk about that. So that's just where I am right now with it, and I'm hopeful that we get to that conversation at some point.
Mr. White, and then Ms. Self.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd asked this question at the subcommittee, and we didn't get anything back, and it may be because it's not particularly answerable, or answerable in clear form. I'd asked a question about the R3, R4 districts and the reduction in floor area ratio or bulk that is on the table now, and also, in the commercial districts, the reduction in bulk that is on the table now with, I'll call it, the coalition proposal. Did, and I asked staff to look into that as, in terms of trying to quantify it. Were you, is that, are there too many variables to that to be able to do, or were you able to wrestle with that a little bit?
Madam Mayor, Councilman White, we did do sort of a thumbnail sketch of that, and we focused on the R3, R4 discussion that you asked about at the ad hoc subcommittee, and we looked at a couple of different scenarios. One of them is if you did a demo and replace of all the existing R3, R4, and what would be the difference between building it all out as variable density under the criteria we have today versus average unit density? What would be that difference? And then we looked at it based on our EIR projections and numbers of units over the next 20 years, then what would it look like in those same areas, R3, R4 zones? And essentially, what the findings are, I mean, you ask about square footages as well as the FAR. For the demo and replace of existing, it's about a, close to a 12 million square-foot reduction in the amount of square feet. An FAR change of, where the average might be 0.64, you'd see a 0.4. So again, it's a reduction in the size of the buildings.
A one-third reduction in floor area ratio in the R3, R4, from the status quo. So that was the R3, R4.
And then you look at the EIR scenario over the next 20 years, and again, it's kind of similar, if 35 acres, it's approximately 35 acres, and you have, we're projecting something like 590 new units in those areas, so you'd have under variable density at a unit size, and these unit sizes are for both these scenarios. For variable density, we used an assumption of 1,400 square-foot unit size, and for average unit density, about a 900 square-foot unit. So given those differences, you'd get a build-out of about 826,000 square feet under variable density, and 531,000 square feet under variable density. So, you know, a difference of close to 300,000.
It's a, and that, and of course, and then on the commercial, the portion you've worked on is the R3, R4, and we haven't gotten to the commercial yet.
And my apologies for getting that to you late, we did send that out this morning, and I think you copied all of the council, but it's, you know, like I said, it was...
There it is. And the other piece of that is, in the commercial district, and where the speculation is that there are similar reductions in bulk that are feasible, that would occur if the current coalition proposal moves forward. It would be a reduction in bulk from the status quo area. Okay. And then secondly, I did receive the Sandman spreadsheet, and I expect everybody else at the council did too, but it was not described in the list of buildings. And one piece of information that was missing from that that might be useful is what the height of the Sandman building is on the books today. I just, I mean, I've forgotten what the approved project height was. That might be interesting to know. But, and so I'll just wait till comments to talk about that piece, but I thought that was... was an interesting little statistical summary. Questions? Oh, and then I, I thought in the, in the, Mr. Hotchkiss and I were comparing a couple of thoughts on this, that when we're looking at the various slides that were, were created for today of the different conceptual buildings, it seemed like with above-ground parking that we ended up, if we were just, if we were under a floor area ratio of 2.0, we could stay at three stories. It seemed like just about, about 2.0 is where you had to go to a fourth story with above-ground parking to, to achieve those densities. So, that was about, or four area ratio. And again, I've been talking about this as, as, as a pretty important metric for going forward. It's something that people can, can get their heads around. So, that's, that's at least, staff would agree that that's kind of the ballpark figure where you have to go to four stories if you go above the, the 2.0 FAR.
Well, according to what we've worked out here, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Self. Oh, I'm sorry. Was there something else?
Well, I think this is a more conceptual question. I, I'm concerned about, we talked about the schedule that was occurring that's been proposed. Are we, are we losing some opportunities for, I know the housing element is, is waiting in the wings. Are we losing opportunities for any funding? I'm, I was hearing rumors to that effect, that we, we are losing the opportunity to apply for grants because of the slow processing that we're going on here. Is there any truth to that?
Mr. Casey.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, to some extent, yes. There are some state grants that require cities to have a certified housing element. There was one that recently came through that had the ability to go for about an $80,000 grant for some park improvements within low-income areas, but you had to have a certified housing element, so we didn't pursue that funding at this time. We've also, in the past, received about three cycles' worth of funding. Based upon the amount of affordable housing we've built, we would get some funds back from the state to do capital improvements in the east side and west side neighborhoods. But that also requires a certified housing element, so we wouldn't be able to pursue that funding at this point either. But I don't have a ballpark number about how much that might be available. Because quite frankly, I think state grants are starting to winnow down a little bit as well.
Think they're slimming down a little tad?
Exactly. But they often do, the housing-related ones often do require a certified housing element. It's kind of the state's way of, of trying to hold that over local communities' heads.
And that's discouraging. Thank you.
Ms. Self.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Am I correct that if you see you do not have five votes up here for an item, the policy is out? Is that correct?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Self, the actions of the council to approve, adopt, and move the plan forward requires five votes.
Right.
That's the ultimate decision point. At this point, where the council is discussing amongst yourselves what are the key issues, what kind of changes you want to direct staff to either explore, revise language, take out policy direction in some way or another, we are looking for the council discussion on that to at least certainly be a majority direction. In the prior council discussions from earlier meetings that are reflected in Attachment Three of the staff report, some of those items, I think, received 5-2 vote direction. I think there may have been one or two that received a 4-3 when, when straw votes were taken. So, it's really up to the council in terms of how you discuss amongst yourself and how you provide direction to the staff, but given that ultimately the decision is a five vote at a minimum matter, we do think that that should certainly be kept in mind, but we're not setting that as just standard for your discussion in general direction. It's really the standard for the ultimate adoption.
Wouldn't that help winnow it down a bit?
I do think that the discussion amongst the council, the more consensus, the more you know, majority, full majority vote will help the process. Yes, I agree.
I guess Mayor would know this. Can we make motions item by item, you know, if we're talking about certain issues?
Well, I think where we are today is not to make any final decisions, it's just to figure out how are we going to get to yes? And, and my, the way I understand what today is about is that if there are, if there are not five, like, for example, the density issue, if five of us up here are not quite ready to say, yes, we're okay with that, then we need to ask the question, what do we need to do in order to further study it or have extra meetings or whatever so that we can get at least five votes to a yes, as opposed to just stopping?
Right. Well, no, I understand with something that complex, but there are things here that I thought were clear, so colleagues, be clear, because there's lots of things that I was of the opinion should not have gone forward that are still in this amended package, but that, and then, two more questions. When is the California census going to be available? I understand it's this month.
I think that, I think August is the, well, but should be.
We do understand that March, so, at this present month, is when we are expecting to receive some initial information.
Initial information, right.
Right.
But it gets certified during the next several months.
It'll come out over a number of phases.
Right. And then I had asked you in our meeting about getting a map of the areas that would be excluded from any granny unit development because of fire concerns, and you can send that to me later if you don't have it here.
Madam Mayor, we do have a copy of the, the map that illustrates the high-fire areas. The question, I think, is related to, at present, the city does have a secondary dwelling unit ordinance. We're required by state law to have an ordinance, sometimes referred to as the granny unit ordinance. So, the present ordinance allows the granny units throughout the city under certain circumstances, but does prohibit them in the high-fire district.
I understand that.
This policy direction is not changing that. It still recommends that the high-fire district remain an area where they are prohibited, and it recommends that if the existing ordinance were to be revised or amended at some point in the future, that the council and the community consider revising the secondary dwelling unit ordinance to look at whether or not the units could be attached, whether or not tandem parking or reduced parking would be appropriate. And to do it based on the direction of prior council discussions, the language was amended to say with neighborhood-by-neighborhood approach.
I understand that. I just wanted to know which areas were excluded.
The high-fire, okay.
Yeah, and that was the map I was looking for.
The map above in the red color indicates the high-fire areas of the city where the secondary dwelling units are currently prohibited and would remain so unless.
Right. No, I understand that that's not being, nobody's asking to change that.
There it is.
I, I would just like a copy of that, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move to public comment, any other, unless there are any other questions. Okay. We have a number of speakers here. You have two minutes up at the podium. We're going to start with Jane Breckwald, and be followed by Grant Castleberg.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jane Breckwald. I'm a member of the Coalition for Community Wellness, and as you know, there's about 15 different member organizations. You've all received a letter. It's been distributed to all of you, but I'd like to read this. The Coalition for Community Wellness was founded four years ago to help policymakers understand the health impacts of their decisions with the goal of lowering rates of injury, obesity, and chronic diseases such as cardiovascular disease, diabetes, and asthma. There are more than 50 scientific studies that show significant relationships between community design, physical activity, and obesity. People take advantage of healthy opportunities when there are options that are convenient for them. The city takes leadership role in creating such opportunities by providing some areas of the city with higher density, which will promote walking, biking, and taking trans, public transportation. The members of the coalition have participated in many of the public hearings and have convened educational forums on health and community design. We urge the city council to act now, not further delay, to approve Plan Santa Barbara and to assure that it provides for the well-being of its residents. Thank you.
Grant Castleberg will be followed by Karen Kreiper, I think it says. Is Grant here? Karen? Come on up. If I mispronounced your last name, I apologize. If you could, and then Karen will be followed by Milton Hess.
Good afternoon. I have been under the impression so far that Santa Barbara was a destination place which should benefit everybody, the hotels, the restaurants, and people like that. Now, after listening to you gentlemen and ladies, I feel like I'm in LA downtown, haggling over little spaces and don't come to any conclusion and making this into something very undesirable. And who is going to benefit from that? Of first, the developer. That's number one. Second, special interests and things like that. So, I would say that you should concentrate on Santa Barbara beautiful, and you should have parks, you have nice hotels, the theater, and things like that. If you want housing and things like that, go to Milpas. Milpas is an area that should be upgraded and should be made beautiful. The citizens there will thank you for that. And the rest of us will not be approving your wonderful plans. Now, I live in an area, I live right next to the Bacara, and there is that area Haskell's Beach. And Haskell's Beach, I asked one of the city councils in Golita, I say, how much is a unit cost? Oh, they say, that's affordable housing, $801,000 a pop. So, how much does a person have to make a year in order to consider that affordable? Maybe you, ladies and gentlemen, can afford that? I can't. My house is worth a lot, but I got into that when it was affordable. What is affordable nowadays? Well, in my opinion, it's supposed to be cheap, but what it is, it's, it's inflated. Santa Barbara is inflated. Yeah. So, just don't go ahead with that. I think it's ludicrous.
Milton Hess will be followed by Jean Holmes.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Milt Hess, and I am the president of the Upper East Association, which is the neighborhood association of the Upper East. I'm here today to reiterate the position on secondary or granny units that we presented to city council in April of 2010. The Upper East Association is firmly opposed to any easing of the requirements for granny units. As we wrote last year, we continue to support the current ordinance requirements for second dwelling units within the current single-family designations. The current requirements support the availability of such units, but they provide sufficient controls and reviews to prevent an adverse impact on our historic neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean Holmes will be followed by Kellum DeForest.
I am Jean Holmes, and I'm speaking for the Santa Barbara League of Women Voters. I'm not here today to talk about content of Plan Santa Barbara, but rather to talk about where do we go from here? The city has invested enormous amounts of time and money over the years on this enterprise, and I'd like to note here that the process has included considerable outreach to the public, for which the league is very grateful. So, the public has also invested a lot of time and effort in Plan Santa Barbara. But now, it seems to us, it is time for the process to continue with an emphasis on compromise, on making the consensus possible, which will make the plan go forward. Consequently, the league supports the second of the three recommendations from planning staff. We should focus on developing a compromise on the density issue and then move on to a consensus on basic planning framework. There are issues which will be, have to be settled later on during the implementation phase, so be it. But now, let's see if we can come together and replace the current outdated general plan with one that will take us into the future. The league thinks it can be done. Thank you.
Kellum DeForest will be followed by Steve Forcell.
Let's see if I can. In my opinion, the plan needs to be pared to include, cut back, to include only items that deal with planning, not social engineering, such as preventing obesity, as a speaker just spoke of. That's not what Plan Santa Barbara should be about. But more important than pairing is the realization that Santa Barbara is a unique city, both in geography and history. It is apparent from the current plan that the unique nature of our city has not been fully taken into account. I do not think that anyone appreciative of Santa Barbara, that lady you just spoke of, wants greater density with more three- and four-story buildings anywhere in the city. Back in 1983, I think I've got the date right, the citizens voted to limit commercial development with Proposition B. Maybe we need a new ballot measure to limit residential development. The plan should be for Santa Barbara citizens, not for developers. Thank you.
Steve Forcell will be followed by Mickey Flex.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Steve Forcell. I've lived on the Upper East Side for over 25 years, and I've been a real estate appraiser in Santa Barbara for over 30 years. I want to talk to you a little about granny units. In my time of appraising, I've seen virtually every variation of illegal spaces used for illegal purposes and multiple-family when that wasn't intended. And in reading through the current or proposed changes possible for granny units, I just want to caution you about a few things. Tandem parking. Tandem parking will never happen. Nobody will ever do it. They will park on the street. It's just not going to happen, and it's completely unenforceable. Are we going to have police driving around looking to see if this is tandem parking for the granny unit? No, that, that's not going to, not going to happen. The, one of the other issues is the size. I see there's a possibility of changing the unit size up from 300, up to 700 square feet. If you get, in a detached unit, the possibility of allowing detached units rather than attached, if you get a 700-square-foot detached unit, it's just going to be another unit. It's not going to be a granny unit. Someone's going to put up another wall and make a studio into a one-bedroom, put up another wall and make a one-bedroom into a two-bedroom, and you're going to have two or three more cars. The parking issue on the Upper East Side, a number of years ago, when they were putting up signs all over town for street sweeping, we convinced the council at that time that not to put them up on the Upper East Side. I was very opposed, I was on Park and Recreation at that time, to having the signs, and it was agreed that they wouldn't, and they would see if we could self-police ourselves on the Upper East Side and not have a lot of cars parked so that they could still do street sweeping. I think we've done a very good job of that over the period of time, and they haven't needed to come and put the signs up.
You wind up, please.
Excuse me?
You have two minutes. If you could wind up, please.
Okay. So, if the, if we do have tandem, this tandem and additional parking or less parking required, we'll have more cars on the street, and we'll have play into that. Have I used up my time?
You're beyond your time, but thank you.
Thank you.
Mickey Flex will be followed by Deborah Slate. Mickey Flax will be followed by Deborah Slate.
Good afternoon. I have taken the liberty of ordering from Amazon a new book, I think by a Yale professor, on how people who live in cities throughout the world, including cities like Hong Kong, are healthier, live longer, and have a more satisfied with their lives, believe that they have a better quality of life. So just a point to make, and I will have this book available for anybody who wants it. I have been a part of the coalition and the recommendation we gave you, and I'd like to point out that it is composed of rather strange bedfellows. But like the builders, and SBCAN, and CPA, and League of Women Voters, and Coast, and the health people, and just a wide range across the community, they all share a recognition of the following: that lack of housing, that there is a lack of housing opportunities for local workers; that we desire to make it possible to build such housing in the downtown and at a higher density. Because, in part, such housing would also reduce traffic congestion and traffic on downtown, both on the freeway, reduce commuting on the freeway and traffic congestion on the downtown streets. That is the thrust of Plan Santa Barbara. And it seems to me that the city council as a whole has to decide. If it agrees with those kinds of recommendations, then it has to vote for the plan that has been presented both by the staff and the coalition. If it doesn't agree with those propositions, then we can keep the present zoning. We can watch to see the computer models show that in the future, and in 20 years...
Please wind up.
...we will not build the housing. The rich will get richer, the poor will get poorer, and the homeless will continue to die on our streets. That is something that you have to decide. Do you share the recognition that a large portion of the community has brought to you or not?
Thank you.
If you do, move ahead. If not, forget it. Thank you.
Deborah Slate will be followed by John Campanella.
Dear Mayor Schneider and council members, my name is Deborah Slate. I'm here today to urge you to adopt Plan Santa Barbara. Plan Santa Barbara has been in the works for five years and has cost $1 million. During those five years, there have been many public forums for public input. Last year, the Planning Commission developed a hybrid of Plan Santa Barbara which answers most of the concerns of the public. We cannot just drop the general plan update. We need a general plan update. I urge you to find a compromise regarding the density discussion and adopt a hybrid of Plan Santa Barbara. Thank you for your consideration.
John Campanella will be followed by Paul Hernandi.
Good afternoon. I also am in favor of Plan Santa Barbara, as you know. Just a couple of clarifications that I heard during the presentation. I think staff mentioned that there was something like 125 to 150 units produced, built, in the city the last 10 or 15 years. Is that correct?
Per year.
Per year. Yeah, annually, per year. Does that include affordable rentals? Okay. So I think I didn't, I saw maybe some reasoning that because we weren't producing a lot of market rate units, there wasn't a need for it. So why are we coming up with 2,800 units? I presume that in all the EIR documentation and trends analysis that was done, there was a need that was shown for moderate price for sale and rental units in the city. I'm assuming that's in the package, and that's been discussed. There is a need. The problem is, they haven't been produced. I would presume that if you take out the affordable rentals, you see high-end luxury condos is what's been produced over the last 10, 15 years. 70%, 60% of the people here rent, and that's probably even a greater demand because of housing costs and the ability to get financing today. So I would say, I would just ask that we not be persuaded that because lower-priced units weren't produced, that there's not a need for them. In fact, there's more than a need forever, and I'm echoing Mickey's comments. Just a couple of other comments. I think some of the studies worked out pretty well as far as straight lines and black lines. We saw square footages in there with units. There were two-bedroom, two-bath units. That's a typical modest-for-sale. It was 1,000 square feet, similar to what we've been talking about. A 750-foot one-bedroom, one-bath that would make a good rental. A 900-square-foot two-bedroom, one-bath that would make a good rental. I think what they showed in design is pretty much what we've been saying in order to get modest-sized units. What I don't agree with is, I think on the horizon, is trying to get a lot of 600-square-foot units into a building. That's not really what we're about. We used it for averaging only, to take 1,000 square-foot averages down a little bit.
Wind up, please.
So there are no pictures of 600-square-foot units because those are no-bedroom units. So I think we have to really be concerned that we're still providing adequate living area for people, and this is actually... Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Hernandi will be followed by Bill Marks.
Good afternoon. I'm Ash Schneider, council members. I am Paul Hernandi, speaking for myself. I am sorry that I am called before Planning Commissioner Lodge, because I think I know what she's going to say, and I mostly agree with that, namely, to experiment first and then decide through the adaptive management program whether one can really go to the high density, rather than the other way around. Accept the high density as part of the general plan update, and then allow a few experiments, and then possibly reduce the density. That seems like possibly if we have to close the barn after the horses are out. A similar situation, I think, prevails concerning the 500-foot buffer from the freeway, between the freeway and residential developments or other sensitive developments, such as schools and daycare centers and so on and so forth. I really think that the coalition's recommendation to observe the 500-foot buffer as the state and county agencies about air quality seem to demand, and then if later it turns out that the air quality is getting better, then possibly allow a smaller buffer, but not the other way around, as the current plan might be interpreted as demanding. There is one respect in which I am not totally in agreement with Sheila, because I don't believe that the Upper State Street is a good place for experimentation, unless we just want to throw out the Upper State Street study area guidelines.
Please wind up.
I will, which insisted on the SD2 standards. And the Sandman example that Mr. White brought up illustrates that very well, because what could be approved is so much less than what would be built under the higher, the intensity, that it is totally incomparable. And especially because it could only be approved because the developer claimed four-and-a-half acres, including a second parcel, and not just the three-and-a-half acres as the base on which the condos are established, on the basis of which then the density could be approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your patience.
Bill Marks will be followed by Kathy McCammon.
Madam Mayor and council members, Bill Marks, speaking for myself. I'd like to begin by commending the subcommittee for a very useful building tour, so we get some concrete idea of what we're talking about, pun intended. Looking at the subcommittee's examples of existing buildings, I note that the El Andaluz is 46.6 feet high and is a rather nice three-story building at around 30,000 squares. The plan update, page three, allows for 1.35 million squares of non-residential, with the lion's share of 600,000 squares going to community benefit. This picture allows for the building of 20 more El Andaluz-sized buildings, if you divide 600,000 by 30,000, in addition to buildings already approved or in the pipeline. And these new El Andaluzes could be topped with a fourth story, since they would almost inescapably fit into one of the five benefit categories on page four, permitting heights over 47 feet. So the 47-foot height looks to me more like a starting point than a limit. For starters, what we need to limit is more benefit categories and mixed-use inclusionary housing deals if we can't get rid of these Trojan horses altogether. Then I would encourage the council to work on defining terms like community priority, economic priority, and special needs. Finally, what kind of small and local business needs to occupy a big four-story building? Thank you very much.
Kathy McCammon will be followed by Jeff Bard, and the final speaker will be Sheila Lodge.
I'm Kathy McCammon, and I'm here for Allied Neighborhoods Association. I hope you received copies of our comments. I just want to highlight a few. Some of the things we're really concerned about is that there are a number of items that have not yet been discussed at public hearings or have had discussion. We would appreciate the opportunity to have this discussion before full adoption of this document. Parking maximums have been brought up. We still believe these will have serious impacts on residential areas. We're concerned that residential areas that have parking requirements are already overparked. So we see not requiring enough parking just doesn't make it. The existing requirements are not adequate. We're concerned with what happens during fires. When the police and fire want the areas evacuated and cleared of cars, will having more cars on the streets make this problem even worse? We are opposed to changing the standards on the granny units. And one thing that really is bothersome is that a number of our organizations have been told that their area would not be included in the residential areas in the map marked for granny units. However, yet the language seems to still apply to all the neighborhoods. Then we're also concerned about fees. We think any new fees need to be examined as to their purpose, effectiveness, and sensitivity to economic circumstances. On-street parking, paid parking, for example, could affect the ability of our downtown merchants to survive.
Please wind up.
So could bus passes and other bonuses that are being talked about. We think there needs to be a fair discussion of noise impacts, and this has to do with both the raising the standard and also the averaging, so that the net result is there's really never a noise impact. And we think for new residents, they should not be subjected to higher noise levels than the existing residents are willing to accept.
Thank you.
In summary, it would appear that the proposed changes in the general plan are designed to facilitate new residents into the city. There is virtually no respect or protection of existing residents for their quality of life. Thank you. If anyone needs copies, I have additional copies of what I'm...
Thank you. Jeff Bard and then Sheila Lodge.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to echo what John Campanella, Mickey Flax, Jean Holmes, Deborah Slate, and many others have said in support of Plan Santa Barbara. In 1980, I was registered as a Republican so I could vote for Phil Crane, not Ronald Reagan, under the idea of getting the economy going and hearing the sound of hammers swinging and the sound of skill saws building America. What happened? You guys won't let us build. You tore down 600 units. No wonder you've got homeless people, and you will continue to have them, one way or another, until you build. Got to build somewhere. No place is too precious to put some housing for human beings. Somebody called it special interests. Shame on that person. You're trying to say a mother with a child, infant is a special interest? What planet are you from? Some of these people are actually senile before this podium. Disregard them, please. Let's get back to the bipartisan coalition that built this country. Now, we're bogging down, okay? Highway setback, I think it's a pretty good ideal. Let's make it possible to bike and walk. Make it possible, okay? We need fit people in our country. China's got a stealth bomber, 6,000-kilometer-range carrier killer. I don't mean to be an alarmist, but when it comes to defending our country, I will stand shoulder to shoulder with the most rock-rib Republicans there are. And we need a healthy, strong country. We need Plan Santa Barbara. On traffic, I'd like to see a more finely, finer, more fine gradations. The type of commercial really has different levels of traffic. A marijuana dispensary has a lot more traffic, for instance, than a law firm. Karate studio with a class of 15 people has more traffic than perhaps a sewing machine store. And there's a lot more that would be said, but the coalition rocks, and let's get it done. Thank you.
Sheila Lodge will be the final speaker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have some copies of maps, which I, hard copies, if you would like to have those.
Pass those out.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. Plan Santa Barbara proposes a significant increase in density. However, there is no assurance that increased density, per se, by itself in the commercial and other zones will create affordable middle-income housing. There's a clear benefit to those who own the property, but there is no certain benefit to the community. I propose that the city retain existing densities as in this revised general plan map. All zones are designated medium-high density, 12 to 25 dwelling units to the acre. Councilmember Francisco's proposal to establish a program of allowing a limited number of dwelling units in higher-density projects and then evaluating them later under the adaptive management program would be a way to see if higher-density projects do achieve the city goals. With existing densities as a base, the adaptive management program then can effectively be applied if they do not. The red and purple areas on the map would be where I would suggest that these experimental high-density projects be allowed. With existing densities, the overlay zones for rental employer and limited equity co-op should be established at 100% bonus. Other incentives are the reduction in average unit size, additional incentives for more afford, smaller, more affordable units. Another could be bonus density for all residential units in non-residential, non-residential The most sustainable thing Santa Barbara can do is to continue on its slow-growth path. That will put the least pressure on the city's resources, it will protect the things that Santa Barbians love about their city, and it will protect our economy dependent on maintaining what makes Santa Barbara distinctive. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Back to the council. I think what we're going to try to accomplish today, I have a what, how, when. You had something similar, staff, in that last slide of what do we need to discuss? And I know we have a new council member here since the last time we talked about this as a council, so we'll have to hear from where you are. That will be your debut. But the real question, I'd like to try to steer it, that if you were a yes on some things, are you still a yes? If you were a no, can you get to yes? And if you weren't here, where are you? So that's sort of the... And there are some items that we saw in Attachment III that were there, that we've talked about in great detail at past meetings. And then the issue related to the subcommittee and where we are with that and where to go. And then if there are other items, and I know particular council member Self had some items and perhaps some others, now is the chance to bring up those other items. And if in those other items, if there are five people or more total that want to move something forward, we can figure out how to do that. That's probably the, that would be my suggestion on how to do that. When we figure out the what, then the how. Is it a full council discussion? Is it back to a subcommittee? If it is the subcommittee, I want to make sure the current members are still okay being the current members, and if not, then we need to figure that out. So I'm assuming they are, but if not, we want to know that. And then finally, what would be a reasonable timeframe to put this all together? The recommendation from staff is to, I think, by May-June, right, to bring this back? So why don't we start with Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to talk first about the subcommittee. Despite the fact that due to a server glitch, we didn't always get notices about when those meetings would be, the ones that we did have, I thought were productive. I think it's useful to have that workshop sort of format where we can speak freely. And we also had quite a few... of these issues. What I would like to see, what I think would actually be a good way forward at this point, if the current members of the subcommittee are willing to remain on board, I think that we can work through a lot of these issues. I think our subcommittee is fairly representative of the council as a whole, and I think that would be a good way to go through this and have the subcommittee come back with a recommendation on what it thinks is the right way to go forward on a lot of issues, not just the focus of density, which obviously is the largest issue and has been a stumbling block, but all of the major issues before us. I think that's a good approach.
Can I just ask a question about the subcommittee? There was a lot of work put together, and we saw a presentation, but there hasn't been a final kind of recommendation from the subcommittee yet.
That's true.
Is that correct?
That's true.
Okay. Okay. Here we go. Mr. Hotchkiss and then Ms. Self.
Right. I'd like to support what Mr. Francisco said. I do think that it's been helpful. And there are a lot of details that remain to be done, and it's been a pleasure and educational for me to be on that subcommittee, so I would be happy to maintain that, continue.
Thank you. Well, Mr. White, and you and the subcommittee for talking about that. Start, Ms. Self, you'll be next.
The subcommittee trio here. Well, yes, I think the, for example, the piece that was presented today with the buildings showing existing buildings and what density could exist there, and again, and at one point, I'll discuss the sandman is at least what I think it, some of the instructiveness it has, and the very, and then hypothetical buildings and how they look and would look and their scale. Obviously, I'm asking questions about that and making comments about that. So that's critical to my clarifying the conceptual viewpoints that I've developed over the, working on this plan virtually since its inception. I had hoped that we would be, that the subcommittee would be having some recommendations by now, and so I felt like we had the opportunity to do that. And if we need more time to do that, then so be it. We do get, the informality is certainly, as we know, it's an easier way to get, to have a dialogue. But I hope that we'll get to some policy recommendations out of it, that the give and take of dialogue can occur. I've seen us get educated, perhaps more, but I just haven't seen us come up with some policy ideas to bring forward to council yet. So that's, I hope that if we're going to do more, I certainly would love to serve more on subcommittee, particularly if we're going to be chewing on some policy options to bring forward to council.
Thank you, and thank you to the subcommittee members for your work. Ms. Self?
Thank you. First, I'd like to recommend that we have this every other week on the agenda to discuss at council so that if we're not wrestling with the weighty issue of density, and that is certainly the most troublesome for the community on both sides, that we can whittle away at some of these other things. And usually, when you make a major decision, the first question you ask yourself is why? And why are we looking to increase density when we need 2,800 over the next 20 years, maybe less, depending on the census? And right now, we can build 8,000. It absolutely, I feel like I'm in an altered universe here. And the, Mr. White brought up the suggestion fairly early on, and I think it's a great one because we can, we have used successfully FARs in our single-family home design guidelines to get the kind of bulk and scale we're looking for. We could do that and end up with buildings that fit, that developers thought they could sell, and we wouldn't need to even think about form-based zoning that is very labor-intensive. And I, from the people that I've talked to, filling smaller units is more difficult. People don't want to live in a cube, by and large, unless they have to. In fact, the Samarkan retirement community and Viaverde retirement community have been converting their studios in one-bedrooms and combining them for more space, for the argument that when you get old, you get old, you have a lot more stuff than when you're young. And a lot of people don't want to get rid of their stuff. They like their stuff. And so, these retirement communities are trying to fill the need, and they need bigger units. So if we have a sensible parking requirement, if we stick to an FAR, we'll make the kind, we'll continue with this beautiful community. When they say, when our planning department can't show us any examples where this has been done and the community has sort of gone on in a merry way, and instead tells us we should look at smart growth websites, I've done that. So what they're asking us to do up here is to experiment with our city. I'm not prepared to do that. You could count me a preservationalist. My children can't afford to live here. If I had to buy my house today, I couldn't afford here. But I do not have the right to demand that we fundamentally change this beautiful city because there are people who, I'm not saying it's ill-intended, but have a different vision for Santa Barbara than those of us who moved here, purchased here, have made this our home. And I think that's what we need to consider. And in fact, in upping these densities, as suggested, the planning division at my request sent me this information. Now, these are both Housing Authority projects. The Bradley project, which is at 512 Bath, is 50.5 units per acre. Now, what if we up it to 45? We could get to 120, I guess. We do have one that's 120 in this town. We got 25 bonus-density units. That's just about double. We have Artisan Court. This is on the Cota corridor, which they're wanting to up the density. We have 61.6 acres per unit, per acre, excuse me, 32 bonus-density units. Is that what we want our entire community to be? Now, this is with our existing densities. Imagine ramping that up. And again, I go back to my primary question, why? Until I get that answered in a suitable way, and look at all the hoops they have to jump through, this many units and average and this and that, ah, things are becoming so complex. FARs make it simple. Everybody can look at the lot, figure out what they can build, they know the guidelines, and we're done with it. So maybe that's, I don't know. Am I being too simplistic? Anyway, I'm looking forward to comments on council so we can start to wrestle this to the ground, so that we are giving staff clear direction, so we can stop getting vague answers that we can't get our hands around. I'm a get-it-done, do-it, find out where we stand. If my argument doesn't prevail, I can live with that. I'm one of these. But I consider myself the community ombudsman, and I will represent the community at large and do what I think is best for that in my own heart. So send me an email if you don't like it. We can chat over coffee. Thanks.
So I'm clear, you would rather see the full council rather than a subcommittee?
I think in order to get it done, if we met with this every other week and took a smaller bite, we're going to talk about this.
Okay.
That that, that we could move ahead and make decisions rather than, you know, when it goes so long, it's kind of like, where was I last time? What was said? And I think this document of changes maybe reflects that because we aren't being clear enough, and it's time we hit the target with our tongue.
Okay. Madam Mayor? Ms. Weiss?
I'm sorry for the interruption. I just wanted to reiterate, I think, a comment that you made and what the bullets on the overhead are kind of in a good order for helping decision-making. Rather than focusing on how, be it council meeting or ad hoc committees, it might really help the discussion move along if we talked about the what, the issues, because it's not one or the other. Certainly, this full council can meet and discuss certain issues that would be appropriate for the full council discussion. Other issues that you specifically want to delegate to a subcommittee discussion because you think that would be helpful in a subcommittee. I don't know that it has to be either-or, but I can tell you that I think we'll be more productive and constructive and move towards a decision if we first know what subjects are the key issues, and then based on the nature of that subject, decide where and how the conversation should occur. So you made that same order of consideration, and so I think we'd like more direct clarity on which issues need to be discussed.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. I agree with Ms. Weiss. I think those bullet points are a good template to use, and as much as I agree with many of Ms. Self's comments, I do think that the subcommittee is going to be a little more agile when it comes to bringing something synthesized back to us to discuss in a more cogent manner. I think we will have to have more of these full council discussions, however. What I thought I would do is throw out what my thoughts are so far, and certainly, prior to my time on council, you heard me talk enough about traffic and circulation issues, so I probably don't have to rehash where I am on those. It's been a very long and horribly expensive process, but I do have to say that in my observations, both outside and inside of council, I'm impressed that what staff's flexibility has been compared to what the plan was and the plan Santa Barbara policy options were initially to what we've come down to now. I think we have, hopefully, hopefully tried to leave the neighborhoods alone. The neighborhoods are a little touchy these days, as Mr. Hotchkiss and Mr. White and I found out last night, that they are a little sensitive to council intervention in some of their issues, along the lines of grant units, along the lines of a lot of ideas. So this seems to be more concentrated on the downtown areas, which I think is, which is a good thing. The assumptions that I am concerned with going forward are general assumptions, but how we got here. Your workforce housing assumes that we have some knowledge and data on the workforce, which I think we have a real paucity of that. I don't think we know how many workers we have. I don't think we know where they live. I don't think we know what they make. So to assume that we know how they commute or if they commute, to assume that they could afford something based on some standard, I just don't think we harvested the data for that. I feel a little under-informed to make a policy decision based on those things. I don't know, I'm not a developer. I don't know that a rental housing development is something a developer would want to develop if that's a profitable thing to do. Most developers I know like to develop things and then sell them. And then when it comes to making affordable housing without subsidies by the private sector, what my experience is, we build the most expensive parking per space on the planet. So I don't know how we're going to do affordable housing from the private sector unsubsidized in this area. So we talk about developing workforce housing. I don't know how small those units have to be and how dense they have to be for us to get there. So that's something, I don't think we have the amount of data that we should have on board. I agree with my friend Kellum out there about the social engineering aspect. I don't know that we can design our way to a new lifestyle. Santa Barbara is basically a built-out town. These designs and these ideas look great in academic models. They certainly have a lot of computer models attached. They work great out in Apple Valley or wherever, a big stretch of land to plan these things in. But Santa Barbara is set up on a grid, which naturally lends itself to good urban planning, good transit, and good circulation. So I think we're actually most of the way there. I think some of our current zoning and densities actually bring us to a reasonable community mix of how we can live. I don't know what we can do about the affordability aspect of it. I mean, there is supply and demand, but once again, I would, I need to know what the workforce is. I need to know what the projection for the workforce is and what kind of salaries it's going to make. We're basically a service-oriented community, so there's not the kind of high salaries that you're going to service a $500,000, $600,000, $800,000 mortgage with. I don't, you know, I'd love it if there were. If you, a packard's moving here tomorrow, let me know, because I'll be very happy about that. I'm concerned a little bit about, as I look along the Milpus corridor, and I would love to see that area redeveloped, but if we develop in the kinds of densities and the heights we're talking about, that skyline is going to change dramatically. As you look up from town through Milpus into the Riviera and the mountains, it's a pretty spectacular view. So, once again, I'd love to see that, but if we do it in the density-type models we're talking about right now, I don't know that we wouldn't affect the basic look and view of the town that we have today. I think that Ms. Lodge's map of slightly revised densities is actually pretty usable and a compromise, and it kind of deals with some of the densities we have today without affecting a lot of circulation and traffic. So those are basically my concerns as, obviously, I can't speak up at a subcommittee meeting, although I will try to come and observe. You know, the AMP is an attractive policy in terms of putting forth the things on traffic and on density. It is a little bit of a kick-the-can-down-the-road situation, and I think it's going to be hard to put the density genie back in the bottle once you upzone an area. So I'd be a little bit cautious about that. So those are the concerns I have going forward to the committee. I know they weren't very specific. They were more general, but those are the questions that I would ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. House.
Thank you, and thanks to the committee for doing the work that you've done and getting us this far along. It's been very helpful. So just some observations, and perhaps Mr. Ledbetter, if you'd put the 13th slide up there, that was the last of the maps that you had, that would be helpful. So just sort of see if I understand this properly. We're planning for 20 years and about 2,800 units, and the question really, and the answer to the question why, is where would we want to encourage them to go? Do we want to encourage development in the existing single-family neighborhoods beyond what we already have in terms of the current zoning? And the answer is no. And if I'm looking at this map and understanding it correctly, there's no proposal at all to put higher density in the entire community. In fact, and Mr. Ledbetter, if the white areas up there, the ones that aren't colored in, are being proposed to be kept at the existing densities that we have now.
Yes, that's correct.
And then I know that we had an earlier map, but it showed the, some of the areas, just on the, say, the west side of the freeway, where the densities aren't- just on the, say, the west side of the freeway where the densities aren't proposed to be increased at all. That's in the area that's called medium-high density in the proposal that's sort of in front of us now. Yeah, there, it's sort of a, kind of a soft tan color or something, those areas. So, those densities aren't expected to be, aren't planned to be increased, but in fact, using a different approach, the size of the units that could be built there would, over time, would be reduced. You would actually have smaller buildings in the current proposal. So, is that a correct understanding of what's being proposed?
Yes, but that does depend on what eventually the size of the units are.
That's right. So, the, that's, that's, so one of the things that, and just to kind of go to the recommendation, one of the issues that I think is kind of a fine point, but it's an important one, is are we, if we're going to do this average density, excuse me, average size of unit approach as opposed to the variable density approach that we had, have currently, that we pick numbers that are workable. And it seems like somewhere in that, on the lowest end, 600, but 1,000, 1,200-ish, somewhere in that neighborhood, but that's, that needs to be worked on a little bit. In any case, based on what, I think the answer to Mr. White's question earlier, in aggregate, using this approach of average unit size tends, over time, to reduce the bulk of buildings in these areas that I'm talking about now. And now I'm making that assertion, again, I just want to check in and be sure that that's correct because we're protecting most of the city of Santa Barbara from any change in the, in the zone, current zoning for density. And in the areas that we're now talking about, the, while that's staying the same, the actual size of the units is proposed to be reduced using a, a different formula, a different way of approaching things.
Yes, that's correct. I'd just clarify that, you know, that would be in this beige areas here.
Right. That's right. The beige areas that are on the, sort of those fringes of the main downtown core.
You'd see the same densities, but they would be smaller units and presumably smaller buildings.
Thank you. And if we're encouraging mixed use, and this goes to the question of what the status quo is right now, in the status quo, we have a pyramid zoning approach in Santa Barbara where pretty much all of our commercial areas can be developed with residential if there were an economic benefit. And so, we get the, we are getting and have been getting more of the mixed-use kind of buildings and structures coming forward, although we have one recently that was 100% commercial downtown that's been approved but not built yet. I think that it's an important thing for us to consider. If we didn't do anything, and that's the sort of status quo, what would the traffic impacts be? What would the, you know, what kind of intensification of uses, say, commercial uses versus residential? Knowing that the commercial uses of the commercially designated areas are much more intense than the mixed-use or residential mixed-use. There needs to be some comparison of that somewhere so that when we're really talking to the public and we have people saying, you know, we're increasing densities downtown as if it were like, you know, this terrible, you know, this, we're increasing the impact and intensity of uses downtown. In fact, it would be the opposite. It would be a reduction of the potential than if it were developed as commercial. And so, I really want to go back to that. Is that in the reports or in our proposal at any place to compare those kinds of things?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember House, yes, it most definitely is. The environmental impact report for the Plan Santa Barbara project evaluated a number of alternatives. And as required under the state environmental laws, one of the alternatives is called the no project or in effect a status quo in terms of the existing policies and regulations for growth, both residential and non-residential.
Yes.
And in fact, I think what you're indicating you believe would be the outcome is what the EIR did find, that under the existing regulations and no project, we could anticipate worse traffic levels than making some of the policy changes that have been discussed in Plan Santa Barbara could result in, in lesser traffic. And that has been one of the objectives of the whole Plan Santa Barbara process. Goes to an earlier question you had about what is the overall growth management balancing, living within our resources part of Plan Santa Barbara about? And that is about continuing to limit the non-residential growth to some reasonable but limited amount.
Extension of our Measure E, for instance.
Correct.
Which is the one that Ms. Self was talking about.
Right. And encouraging policies that do support housing development. It's just whether or not these policies that make a shift in the type of housing development and where the housing development would have incentive-based standards, that's what this plan is proposing.
But it goes a great, big, I mean, I think that's a big step in the direction of answering perhaps the community's question about why are we bothering to do all this? And if I look at what's in front of us today, at least in the summary and the report that we have here from the staff, from the subcommittee and all these things, it appears that these proposals will have a reduction in traffic impacts in the city of Santa Barbara over what we would do if we just didn't do anything. And that the, that by the kinds of mapping that we have here that really begins to show where the, the future development would be encouraged, the, the bulk of it, that we're effectively protecting the largest part of the city of Santa Barbara against any upzoning or any increasing in zoning whatsoever or density, and that we're putting it in a place where the infrastructure could support it. And again, it appears that there's a, a relationship between transportation and the built environment, that these two things are closely related. And so, I want to comment that I like that about what we're seeing here. I like that the, that the direction of where we're encouraging development is where the infrastructure can handle it and where it doesn't do damage to existing neighborhoods I think most of us would be concerned if it would go the other way. And so, and I think that these are really important themes that most of us would agree that we should be going towards. Maybe we have different ideas of how to get there, but we're trying very hard to get to where we reduce traffic impacts and we protect existing neighborhoods to the maximum degree possible. Some of this, there's, there's this, there's these complimentary things and I mentioned it earlier, but I'll just reinforce it as I summarize here. When we're talking about the, reducing the parking requirements in this area, in the downtown area, these areas that are marked on the map that's up there right now, we have to mention the restrictions on on-street parking and the use of the public parking lots. Those things do go together hand in glove. You can't do one without the other, otherwise the public's concerns would be fully realized. And I think that we've heard from staff that that's already being done and that would be continued and there are other strategies. So, again, I'm looking to Mr. Ledbetter just to ensure that what I'm saying is accurate, that we already are doing those kinds of things and this is still planned to be moving forward. And is that right, Mr. Ledbetter? If we're doing 1 to 1.5, if we're going to reduce the requirements in the future, we actually are already, but we will be making sure that that doesn't end up in the street, that the parking, if there's any overflow parking, they'd have to buy, rent or buy a, a private parking space someplace if that were even possible.
Yes, that's correct. And I mean, we do already have some parking restriction, on-street parking restriction to protect the neighborhoods and certainly that would go hand in hand with, with any future policies that would continue to reduce parking or to unbundle parking, any of these considerations that we've outlined in the plan.
Okay. And to Mr. White's point earlier, he made a very good point about how when you, when you have podium parking, I mean, or a, a design where the, where the parking is at grade and you're building your structure above that, which we've seen around town, that at a certain point, the FAR, where you cross this 2.0 line or you get over to this other side, it, it sort of pushes itself into a fourth story. The one thing that we didn't see much in the examples that you gave us was what we've also seen is where the parking is either semi-submerged or below grade, in which case effectively a four-story building becomes a three-story building to the, to anybody on the street. And I know there's certain costs associated with doing that, but in the design review process, that has become a strategy over and again that we've seen where the buildings reduce in their bulk and, and scale, if you will, to the community by submerging the parking where the, where that's possible. And it seems like what's critical there is that we identify what's acceptable to the public in terms of size, bulk and scale. And we seem to have already done a lot of that. It seems like we've already got a tremendous, and I think this also needs to be highlighted in, in this proposal, in, in our plan, we have done a tremendous amount for the design review boards to have the tools they need to address the size, bulk and scale issues and the compatibility issues in the community. So, I want to just celebrate some of these things that have already been accomplished. They need to be noted, not like we haven't done anything on these things. And we're almost done here with my comments, but adaptive management, yes, absolutely. Benchmarking, having places to stop and turn around and see how it's going, retool. And then a question about what's going on at the subcommittee. I don't know how productive the subcommittee, I mean, initially, the subcommittee was very productive and I'm, the most recent, I was disappointed in not really having some more, you know, checklist of recommendations coming back to us for us to consider and to really chew on because it really helps us refine this debate and not get into the weeds here in the council. So, if we can have the subcommittee do that for us, help, help give us some proposals where you've really chewed on these things and, and come up with something that you want us to consider, then that really helps focus us. But I'm really concerned and Ms. Self, I really am concerned a little bit about taking every little detail here at the dais and I, I just don't think we should. I think that we need to let the subcommittee try to work for us, but please come back with some recommendations the next time. Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I disagree with Mr. House on a couple of points. I think theoretically, the premise is that if you restructure the city this way, you'll have less intensive use downtown. But Ms. Self and I have asked repeatedly for instances of that and have come up with zero. So, I don't want to bank on the theory and without dealing with fact. So, I do like Mr. Francisco's approach of some kind of tentative approach to this with maybe two or three projects over in the first five years. And if we don't get those, in any case, that would be a timeline to come back to and say, hey, are we doing this right or not? I, I don't think we've, you, you're asking for bullet points. Parking is a big one and to me, I think we don't have it right. I know that you want to do one space per unit right now, but these are units that in the real estate market are going to sell for minimally $600,000. That's a starter. $600,000, you're going to require a, an income, a household income of $130,000 in order to carry an 80% loan. And that's minimal. Frankly, right now on condos, you may know, on new condos, you can't get loans. They're just not doing it. And the reason they're not is that banks are afraid if the first condo sells at 600, the next one is going to sell at 550, down they go. Suddenly, the people that are in there are upside down and the whole project is, is bankrupted. So, let's be honest about it, there aren't loans available right now for new condos, but if they were, you'd still be required to have $130,000 income in order to support minimally the purchase of that. That is not within walking range, an easy salary to find downtown in the service industry as you were pointing out. So, now we have at the minimum, two people living in that condo that have to work. Two people living anywhere in a condo are going to go in two different directions. They're not both going to find $65,000 a year jobs within walking space, so, walking distance. So, this brings back to my point of why we have to have more parking than you want to right now. It's absolutely vital. I know it throws all the calculations off, but that's the way, we have to, we have to adapt to the reality around us, not ask the reality to adapt to our theoretical interpretations or preferences. There are a bunch of other things and I'm not sure where we should deal with these that I find objectionable, some of which Mr. DeForest brought up. I mean, do we really need, is the goal, to quote him, is the goal of ensuring organic gardens really worth having in the general plan? Why do we say in the general plan that we are going to promote healthy, affordable food? It sounds great, but we don't have the means to do it and we don't create the means to do it. So, that's the kind of stuff shouldn't, in my opinion, should not be in the general plan. Is the requirement that all employees, employers provide free bus passes to new or to existing employees, is that even practical? When I told Mr. Rouse that, he was shocked. First off, annual bus passes don't exist, so you know. But if you took a monthly bus pass and provided to every employee, that would be 600 bucks per employee. That's going to wipe out some jobs as what, you know, and meaning we're going to down our employment. So, this kind of stuff, this kind of detail doesn't belong there. Now, whether we want to debate that at the council level or at the smaller ad hoc subcommittee, I don't know. I think it might work better at the subcommittee, but I'm open to either. But there are a lot of items like that in this plan that just are not going to fly, I don't believe, and I don't think will carry the five votes that we need. So, we need to whittle this down a lot. I don't know what the right forum is, but you wanted some direction, at least that's what I'm thinking. Thank you.
Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with a lot of the things that Mr. Rouse, Mr. Hotchkiss have said and, and Ms. Self. The, the assumptions that increasing density downtown is some, is somehow going to reduce traffic, those are based on models, not reality. They're based, there are assumptions in the EIR that say that's what's going to happen and I don't believe the EIR. I'm very doubtful about a lot of the material in the EIR. And as Mr. Rouse said, we don't have real data about who's working downtown, how much they make, where they live, where they commute from. And this, this idea that, I realize that there are people who passionately believe in smart growth planning and it's, it's an idea that will probably work some places and, and certainly in a greenfield development, it's possible. Santa Barbara is an existing built-out city and the, the need for increasing dwelling units per acre is doubtful. I don't see the reasoning behind it and I'm sure that the people who endorse those ideas are absolutely sincere in their beliefs, no doubt about that. But they're not the majority in this town by any means. The vast majority of, of people who live in Santa Barbara like Santa Barbara pretty much the way it is. We will change over time, there's no question about that, but we've changed slowly and prudently over many, many decades and I think that's what most people want to continue to do. So, I agree that a radical restructuring of our downtown, a radical increase in density is simply not desirable. We don't know how many new dwelling units are going to be built over the next 20 years. I don't think it's 2,800. I think it's probably half that at best. We'll have some census material coming out soon. That will be something interesting to add to the mix. But unfortunately, I think the basic premise of this idea is, is one that cannot be superimposed on an existing city, especially a unique existing city. I mean, I, probably everyone thinks their city is unique, but I think Santa Barbara can make a better argument for that than most. So, what I would, and that's, that's a major issue. What I would suggest, however, by way of compromise, because I know that there are many people who believe that these sorts of, of projects are the wave of the future, we saw one wave of the future down on Chapala Street and a lot of people didn't like it. So, the prudent way to go forward with these sorts of things, as I've already suggested, is to allow a limited number of higher-density projects to be built to maintain essentially the existing densities. I believe that the, I believe that we should try the average, average unit size method of calculating variable density. I think that's, that's a worthwhile experiment. I'm not too worried about that one, though I also agree that it's something that we need to revisit and look at and see if that's really the way to get the results we want. It may be, I know that many of the, many of the people, many of the developers and builders have a lot of skepticism about it and I think we need to listen to them. So, I do believe, just to be practical about this, that probably the best way to go through a lot of these detailed issues is with a smaller group, the subcommittee. And I think we need, we will need to meet more frequently. Two meetings is not enough. And, but I do think something in the three-month timeframe should be more than adequate for the subcommittee to meet, to bring recommendations to- the Subcommittee to meet, to bring recommendations to Council, and then for Council to go through and make its final decisions. I don't want to see any more time or money spent on this. I want to get it finished, and I think we can do that in three months.
Thank you. Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I'm glad to hear that, and I know that's what Mr. Francisco's, that's consistent with your whole philosophy, so it's, and I'm glad you're reiterating it as your closing comment there. First of all, I, if we do go, it sounds like we're, we'll be heading toward more Subcommittee meetings. I look at this map, and I see, and I recall the compromises, the changes that have been made, in the direction of lowering density, lowering bulk even further, since this process started, let's say, a year ago. Not, the process obviously didn't start a year ago, but the sort of the focus of density was put under the microscope, and the, for example, the historic, when the little dots of historic value started looking, getting, so that if you saw a cluster. And so now, that became a neighborhood of historic areas, of historic structures, that, and then that bulk, that density went down. And that came out of the, lots of give and take, lots of conversation. There have been a number of those pieces like that, that have resulted in changes on this map. So I'm happy with, and the traffic impacts, there were some density that was pulled away from the Mission 101 intersection is another example, pulling, reducing impacts by reducing density. So these things have occurred. I do ask staff to bring forward in the future, the reduction in bulk that is proposed in the commercial district. I appreciate we've got something, and I think that what's useful, I think that the realistic, or the more realistic viewpoint is anticipated number of projects in the R3, R4 zone, and how much bulk is not going, it would be sucked out of that by what's proposed today. I think that's a number, as I recall, was 20, let's say 20% to 25% bulk is reduced out of there by creating smaller units. And it's not millions of square feet, but it's 100,000, 200,000 square feet kind of number over the next 20 years. I look forward to hearing more about that in the, in the commercial district. What are we taking out of it? Because I think, let's get back to the premise, the status quo is not satisfactory. Not satisfactory. So the status quo is Chapala 1. Let's just, if we, we'll all be gone, and another group is here, and they're just trying to squeeze every foot they can out of, in bulk, out of the area, more Chapala ones, and even a little more can occur. And our job is to make sure that doesn't happen. So that is one of our primary tasks going forward, and I expect that we'll be able to do that. I do, I think that true smart growers would look at this map and cringe, and they'd go, my God, you're just letting go of opportunities, you're not, you're just not putting enough density in here, you're not putting enough bulk in here. So that's, because Santa Barbara's unique, and Santa Barbara's special, and Santa Barbara's doing it our way. And I think that, and I appreciate also, I think that we have, the makings, the polywog of adaptive management is with us in the form of Mr. Francisco's comments about, let's have some projects, let's look at them in five years, and let's see what they look like, how they're performing, and so forth and so on. Remember, another ingredient of the status quo, which I like, is the one parking space per unit in the downtown, am I, I'm on base on that. So we've got that, Mr. Hotchkiss. Well, and I'm saying that if you're, the status quo, this is a status quo, this is part of the status quo. And I'm not willing to go to two parking spaces, I'm not willing to cash in that one parking space per unit, for two parking spaces per unit. I'm willing to negotiate on that, I'm willing to look, and particularly do it as Mr. Francisco says, look at some projects in the future, and see how it's playing, and just seeing whether we're blowing it or not, and then it would be, by that time, probably, you know, certainly a different council, at least in, to a significant degree, but would, the tools would be there to adaptively manage. So I'm dismayed, of course, at the time and in the money that we're losing, both in terms of how many, we've seen meetings where there's, you know, three decision-makers, or seven decision-makers, and there's five, six, seven staff, or no, other days when we had consultants, my Lord, on and on, it is gone. And we need to stop that. There were a couple of comments made by the public, Mr. Hernardi brought up the 500 feet, Dr. Hernardi, excuse me, 500 feet on 101, and I don't know where we stand on that, maybe we just bring that back to the Subcommittee rather than take more time now, but I just, we have talked about buffers of 250 and what we're going to do in those areas, but I'd like us to look at that, and just, again, chew on that, but we've got to get through the density, the density issue and the unit size, and I appreciate Mr. Francisco's comment also about, what is the size? What's a reasonable size that the development community can live with, and that's still going to suck bulk out? We need to dial that in the best way possible. But that, the buffer zone area is one I'd like to hear about, maybe that's after we finally, if we ever get to the, to the density, if and when we get to density understanding, then we can deal with that. And Mr. Marx also raised the, us returning to the Measure E, the offspring of Measure E, and looking at those square footages, and frankly, I've been sort of focused on density here for a while, and I would need to at least have that conversation again, so that I'm comfortable on those square footages and all that. I know we've worked on it hard, I just need my memory refreshed on where we are on that. So rental housing, I think that, I, I think Mr. Rouse raised the point of what's practical in the way of rental? Who's going to be building market-rate rental housing? I frankly don't see it happening unless and until the federal government gets behind it again. It worked, we got some ugly stuff built in this town under those rules, and hopefully it wouldn't be that ugly going forward. We've learned that we can build at that density and make it beautiful, but I don't, I think we'll have a little bit of rental housing here or there. That's why my, most of my comments have been toward for-sale housing as we've gone forward. I think that that, they end up becoming rental units, and I think there's, that's what will allow them to be built. But I just see, I'm willing to look at the rental, but, and we did see that one piece where that's where the four stories are coming in, and maybe that's that super-high density just is not, market-rate super-high density may not be in the cards, that may need to be trimmed back a little bit to keep us in Santa Barbara scale. So I look forward to working with the Subcommittee if that's the wishes of Council. And I'm going to bring up one final thing, and that is the Sandman project, when you look at the, at the FARs of the Sandman project, the densities are in the sort of 20 to 35-unit area, this is where they're playing with the floor plans, 20 to 35 units per acre, no, 38 units per acre, excuse me, and the FARs are in the less than .6 range. So we're at a completely different ballpark level of FAR, and it speaks to what Mr. House was talking about, of going, the parking being underground. I appreciate, we're not going to have any four-acre sites, this may be the only four-acre site except for the Lacumbra Plaza that we, that we ever see developed in this part of the world, but we get down to half an acre, three-quarters of an acre, we can start to see that bulk go down, and some unit count go up, and still keep buildings in the Santa Barbara scale. Thank you.
Thank you. I see some other lights on, but I'll chime in at this point, and then bring it back. I appreciate the comments that I've heard, and I'm going to try to keep mind to looking at how can we get to a final outcome that will result in an adoption of a general plan. I do want to clarify a couple of things, some public commentators mentioned, just to reiterate what's been happening before, and again, if you look at the changes in density for looking at the neighborhoods, because I know some neighborhoods were talked about, and so most of the city is not being touched at all, so that kind of, we like where we are, and we like, you know, especially in the single-family home neighborhoods, even on the Mesa on the west side, and so just Hidden Valley, just recognize that there is no proposed increased density in any of those areas, and so if you like what you have, then great, that's what's being proposed, and we're not suggesting to change that. Also, with the granny units, as I understand it, you can just nod that we're not adding any other neighborhood that would allow granny units, that we currently have, that there are currently areas that granny units, where they're allowed, we're not adding new areas, we're just looking at ways to incorporate what policies may be required if one should propose a granny unit, but we're not adding anything to it. So especially in the high-fire areas, I know that was brought up before. So we're not changing those, we're not adding anything.
That is correct. I think that you're hearing these comments, though, because at one time, there was discussion of-
Right, and that was taken away a long time ago.
Correct. But I think that it was at that time that these concerns were initially voiced, so they continue to express that point of view, although certainly the plan has changed since, yes.
Correct. So to respond to that, that there were comments from the community about that, and we actually changed the proposal based on those comments. And I'll also just remind ourselves how much this has changed in the last year or so in terms of the change in densities and the locations behind them. I basically think that the Subcommittee is on a good trajectory, there's momentum, there, you know, it didn't get to a final slew of recommendations to bring back to us, but I think that's probably the best venue to continue these discussions. I'd be a little hesitant just to plan on one council meeting where we can wrap everything up, and it may, you know, in terms of coming, and I think that's where Michael, Ms. Self was getting at. I mean, if we're not on the Subcommittee, and we're just relying on three of seven of us just to solve everything, you know, you don't want to set ourselves up for failure. So I think there's a, I think what the intent was, and I think this is what Ms. Self was getting to, have the Subcommittee get through the real nitty-gritty process, it's more of an informal atmosphere, it's not up here on the dais, you have a little more give and take with the general community, but have an opportunity for, to touch base with the full Council, and hopefully get some things settled. And maybe if we're ready to say, yes, we're ready, great, we can set it up so that happens, but to give ourselves enough time so that if there's some final proposals or suggestions that the Subcommittee needs to look at, we have the time to do that. So as you, so it's going to be a lot of work for the Subcommittee and staff, I can see that, but hopefully, if we can get to something within three months, and I think that's a good goal, I appreciate Mr. Francisco bringing up that goal, let's aim for that goal. I also want to reiterate, I appreciate the perspective and the process Mr. White was talking about, and to remind ourselves that status quo isn't necessarily the best thing either. People are saying, don't change anything in Santa Barbara, but if you go with the no-plan alternative, no changes, then again, we're looking at, you know, what was all that debate about Chapala Street about? I mean, that is, that's current zoning, current policies, and if we want to do things like the average unit size, we just have to figure out the details behind it, that's part of what we're talking about here. And to, you know, it's not an either-or, or a win-lose kind of situation here, we're looking at changing things that make sense, and adapting things when necessary. I do appreciate the need of some form of compromise, or some way that we can all feel comfortable adopting a plan that does change the densities and look at a lot of numbers different from before, and I know there's been conversation at the Subcommittee about how do you incorporate the adaptive plan management, is there, what's like a real-life example or policy that we can look at of trying a few projects at once, and then taking a breather and assessing it, and then deciding, you know, deciding how and whether to move further, and I know Commissioner Lodge has been talking about that as well. I think that's a way we can get to yes on some of those issues where we might feel like something on paper is just not the same thing as something on the ground. And if, and I think that's in the adaptive plan management, if we want to be stronger in our language about how to implement that in the plan, if that's something the Subcommittee wants to approach and bring back to us, I'd be wholly supportive of that. I also just, you know, some people are talking about social engineering, and we don't design to behavior. I, you know, just would suggest that we plan and decide and design to encourage all types of behavior, all the time. I mean, look at the change of State Street and the implementation of the garages downtown from what was there before. What did that do? That encourages different behavior to park in the garage, and walk up and down State Street, and, you know, look at the retail aspect of it as opposed to every single business in the downtown core having its own parking lot. That was a huge change, that was designed, it was planned, and it encouraged different behavior. So I think some of the other items here related to walkability, related to healthy living, public health and that connection, to me, is still very important, and I'd like to see that in there. I wanted to bring that up because it was brought up a couple of times. We're not mandating anyone to provide bus passes forever. I think that all those kind of things were, consider this and look at that, encourage this, and, you know, so I don't think putting that language in the plan, it's already there, it came from a lot of input from a lot of people who are way too busy with their own lives and getting their day-to-day lives together, to tell us again what they already told us in the last five years. And I think we need to honor and respect that feedback that we've heard from hundreds, if not thousands, of comments over the last couple of years, and just because they're not in the room today doesn't mean their comments weren't as valid. And then to say the people who have come each and every time, I mean, I, you know, I appreciate that, and I know how much work has been there, and we should acknowledge the coalition that has been, keep on working with this, and the comments that we're getting from the public to move forward, but in order for us to get to yes. So I guess for me, in summary, I think, I think what I'm hearing is that the Subcommittee still works, the three members are still willing to participate, but with that, we do want a chance where the seven of us could, you know, definitely kind of have the, you know, weigh in as a Council, and as opposed to the end of June, just have one council meeting and saying, are you ready to adopt a general plan? Because just in case, there's a couple of loose edges that need a little more polishing, we'll have that opportunity to do that before those three months are up. So those would be, I think that's where I am. Where are we? Mr. Rouse, and then Ms. Self.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, now that I'm out of the closet about who I am and what I believe in, I'd like to say, I'd like to encourage this Subcommittee activity, if I could be, as so bold to suggest maybe using this room as a venue, or the Gebhardt Room, so that the public can participate, because I do think that can have that, more of that back-and-forth discussion, and get us further down the road quicker, and be in Mr. Francisco's timeframe, which I think is perfectly viable. I think that you could do almost a strikeout version of the entire plan, or put things like what Mr. Hotchkiss was concerned about, about bus pass requirements, whatever we think is in there into the AMP-type toolbox, so we can move past all that, get into the nitty-gritty details of what types of zoning decisions we're going to make here. My impression was, looking at the last Subcommittee, that we weren't that super far away from a resolution. Granted, it's not as much fun without dossier, because that was more entertaining, but it is that we were close, and I think we can be close, and I think we can finish this up pretty easily within the, within the three-month period that you were talking about. So I would encourage that, and I would encourage a more public venue as opposed to Room 15, if that's possible to do, and I think we can move along with this.
I think your suggestion of the Gebhardt Room has worked very well on other thorny or complicated issues, and so, because it allows more of a roundtable discussion, so that might be a good idea. Thank you. Ms. Self?
Thank you. One thing about using the Gebhardt Building, it could be televised, too, which I think that would have a lot of interest. Bendy, I wanted to say in our attachment, three changes to the general plan update on page seven, it looks like we're down to 250, 250- we're down to a 250, 250-foot limit, not 500. And then on page nine, the staff understood us to approve upping the noise. So those are things we can address and be more clear. And I wanted to, Ms. Wees, in our discussion, you were going to tell me what new reports would be done under adaptive management because our, it's kind of vague. It just says report. And I'm more of a specific kind of person. So in the adaptive management, what would be the new report you would be doing? And what are the existing reports you do that would be incorporated in adaptive management?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Self, I don't have a detailed list of the reports that would be done, but I did explain that in many areas, such as the annual water report, we would make use of existing reports.
Right.
Also, monitoring traffic levels has been something that the city has done kind of sporadically in a variety of different ways. And there's been a question out there whether or not the traffic model would be used longer term to track traffic information. We have set up a very, a detailed system for tracking all the non-residential growth and all the residential development activities. So again, those mechanisms and things are in place that we would be tracking. In terms of some of the environmental conditions, we would be working with the Creeks Division and others that have good environmental data. And under the Climate Action Plan Program type of approach and sustainability programs, tracking as we've started in the Environmental Impact Report, as well as the city's sustainability reports, there's a lot of information there in terms of greenhouse gases and energy use and such. So again, I don't think we're talking about tracking things that have never been measured before. And so our focus will be to look for existing data sources and see how reliable they are. But I don't have a listing of that at this time. This is just in response to your question.
And I don't expect you to do it now, but could you put together what reports the adaptive management will be using and what you're not now, you know, we don't have existing reports on this, but we think it would be important to add this?
Okay. To some degree, we also need to get council direction on which things that we will be tracking in the adaptive management program. And we did have a work session with the Planning Commission and talk about wanting to start slow, not build this program into some very large, extensive expectation of all kinds of new data. So I think we're, we may be on the same page here, that the idea isn't to generate a whole bunch of new reports. The suggestion for the first year of implementation, when we get to that stage, is to probably identify a handful, five key resource areas to monitor.
Okay, if you could just send that information so we knew what floor we're starting on.
Okay, that is the Planning Commission work session information. And I'd be happy to send that out again.
Okay, with your summary, please. And I guess moving targets may be nervous. I just, I want to know. And then about the EIR that Mr. House mentioned was that, I believe it was Commissioner Lodge that just, in her discussions with the person who did the EIR, that the staff, well, don't use that word, it sounds too harsh, that not all the options were considered in the EIR. So to say that the EIR says the highest density is the best for traffic, we don't know that information because the other options weren't considered. And if we adopted FARs for mixed use and commercial properties, could that be used to reduce the building size? Ms. Wees?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Self, I think we'd like to address both comments that you made, one regarding the traffic analysis and different alternatives, because I think there was also a clarification, quite an effort made to clarify how the scenarios were developed and that not every scenario was repetitive on each issue. Mr. Dayton?
Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, I keep hearing a little bit this phrase that the traffic model says that with higher density, there'll be less traffic. And I just want to say that it does not say that. It does not say, the model doesn't even speak to density whatsoever. So what it does speak to is that if you have a number of units that you're going to develop in the future, the best place for those is downtown for traffic reduction. But it doesn't say that those units have to be on the same parcel, which is what density has to do with. Density has to do with how many you put on one parcel. So I just want to clarify that because it's not, and it's not saying that we'll, actually the model said that, that we can't get any smarter as a city. So smart growth implementation actually doesn't work in Santa Barbara. The model said that it wouldn't. It said that if you continue to grow as you have in the past, that's what works. So I just wanted to correct those. So in relation to the, to the, and to the different scenarios that we have, we can really extract a lot more information. Like if you chose another scenario, I believe that we have enough information within the scenarios that we did, that's how we designed them, that we could, we could pull out the information with the scenario that you choose with the, with the model runs that we've done. And then also, there is that potential that if you, if you really did want to do another model run, that we could do that.
No, that's okay.
The second question was, would establishing, this is what I heard, would establishing an FAR result in a reduction in the size of the buildings?
Could we use an FAR to reduce the size and bulk of a building?
If the city established an FAR of, say, 2.0 as a maximum, because I think the idea with the floor-to-lot area ratio standard is setting the upper end of what would be acceptable as a maximum. Depending on whether or not the building and lot area, if they did underground parking or not underground parking, whether or not people would build to that maximum or for a variety of reasons, they would build less than that maximum, it would be really on a project-by-project basis. But I can tell you that in the single-family design guideline process, which you have mentioned, we did track the size of home projects that we were seeing before we had the FAR standard. And then once the FAR standard was set, it did bring the building sizes down. So it can certainly have that effect.
It can be designed that way to accomplish that.
If these projects, which we've been surveying and looking at, existing buildings, potential three or four-story buildings have FARs of 1.7, and the city council were to set a, an FAR standard of .8, well, certainly that would then make the buildings smaller. That's, yeah, it's just a matter of numbers and, yes.
So we can look at examples we like and say, well, that's, that and go from there. That's a possibility.
The last time that this discussion occurred, that I, a recent time that this discussion occurred with respect to downtown areas and commercial and mixed-use buildings was when the Historic Landmarks Commission was updating the guidelines and you all received a full, beautiful presentation of the nice guidelines with the photos and all of that. I do want to mention that it was controversial and at the Historic Landmarks Commission, the agreement was to include at the back of the guidelines, a discussion how the FAR can be a useful tool. But they, in their over-a-year discussion about their guideline document, had a few meetings about floor-to-lot area ratio. And just like we experienced in the single-family design process, it's a very controversial topic to arrive at a number.
But we did it.
That's correct. And in the single-family design guidelines. And I just wanted to mention, I can send it all along to you, the appendix portion of the Historic Landmarks of Pueblo Viejo guidelines. Perhaps you'd like to see that.
Thank you. And I just want to say that I don't think anybody up here is looking for status quo. You know, we're not spending all this time, energy, money, meetings, on and on, and public input to, because we do have examples that we do not want duplicated. And so I see this as a way of, of sort of tightening the loophole. And then when I said why, the question is why upzone? It's like, why am I going to put on a new roof? It's leaking. So I need some sort of answer to why. Will it make us more affordable? I'd like to see an example. Will it improve our quality of life? And, you know, those sort of questions that are, I think, important for the community to hear. I think, just ask yourself, why? Thank you. Mr. House?
Thank you. On that FAR point, it seems to me that there are literally two different worlds in which FARs get applied. One in the residential kind of lower-density environment, which we did with the single-family design guidelines. And we've managed to do that successfully and we can see the results. And it was a very hard and long process. Definitely a tool in the toolbox for urban development or development in a downtown. But that's a place where you have commercial development, which is pretty much by right able to develop to zero lot line, one building against the next. And it's just a different world. And when you do introduce residential in the commercial area, then the FARs can have a place. And we saw with the discussion at HLC, how complex that can be, but how useful it can be, not like a single number, but to begin to shape the building so that it's more livable and that it really adjusts to the neighborhood surrounding it and creates a more livable and likely place that people enjoy, will enjoy living there. So it's not as simple as just a number. And I just put that back out there again. I would really caution us from looking for simplistic approaches in an area where it is complex. But there's some things that I hope the subcommittee doesn't do. And I hope that, and it's because of the map that we saw here today and the encouragement of the new densities in the downtown area. And number one of all is, there's no increase at all in the pace of development being proposed here from what we have now. There's nothing extreme about this proposal. It's the same exact pace of development, of housing development that we've had so far for the last 20 or 30 years, or even more. There's no increase in density at all in the current, what we've seen here today. And that's in the single-family and the R2 zones at all. And even in the R3, there's a reduction of bulks and size of the buildings. And that size and the reduction in the size and the bulk of buildings also conveys all the way over into the commercial when you use this average unit-size approach. So these are things that are, have been hard-fought and really accomplished. And we've gotten that from the public's input over the last five years. And here we are today. I hope that whatever you do, if you begin to get too light in terms of the allowable densities in the downtown, what happens is you begin to effectively allow that development potential to spread back out across the community as a whole. And there is definitely a balancing there. And one other piece of that, which really is affecting this, we've put historic resources at the center of our approach, so much so, it's not lip service, it's actually on the map. We've carved out a whole section in the very center of downtown and not maximized densities there because it is adjacent to historic resources. Please don't do anything that would change that. We've, it's been hard-fought and won in the current mapping that we have here. That also does mean that you allow for some intensification in other areas in the downtown area, in these areas that are on the map. But that was a trade-off. That was a very legitimate trade-off. More rentals and moderately priced dwellings where they do good and not harm. And I think that goes to, again, the question about where we're not increasing where granny units are available and we aren't doing any increases in density in the vast, greatest part of the whole city of Santa Barbara. And the commercial development, we, what's being proposed now is about two-thirds of what was proposed for the same 20-year period from before. In fact, it's the same pace, at least. No increase whatsoever in the pace of allowable commercial development is in this current proposal. And there's two-thirds, or less than two-thirds, of what had been approvable for the last 20 years that's in the current proposal. These are really moderating things. This is not, these are not extreme increases in density throughout the entire community, Mr. Francisco. This is not a wholesale upzoning of the community. It's quite the opposite. This is a real retention of things that people really treasure and are important about our community. So please, subcommittee, do not mess with that. This is good stuff. And then to Mr. Rouse, yes, we did take seriously the idea that we wouldn't be prescribing lots of little nuts-and-bolts-y kinds of things in the implementation strategies. We took Mr. Hotchkiss's concerns to heart and changed the entire language structure of this document so that it says, instead of implementation measures, it says possible implementation actions to be considered in the list of things that are underneath each of the policies. We've really softened it so that we can apply things gently and appropriately as we go along. So the adaptive management approach, whether we know what the metrics are right now or not, they, we've designed it into this to not be hardwired, to be very much an organic, ongoing feedback loop that we can apply and improve as we go along. So I'm just, I'm here to sort of sing some praises of what's been hard-fought and won. And if you can start with that, subcommittee, and work on that and bring us back some things, that will make it much more provable when it gets here. So thank you very much, everyone.
Okay. I think you got plenty of direction. More meetings, but a three-month time period as a goal, which I think is challenging, but, you know, we can, we can aim for that with the subcommittee process. Ms. Wees, did you?
Yes. We have a long list of items, I think, based on the discussion today. And we've also heard a number of random comments and just comments such as strikeouts and so forth. So I would just like to ask that the subcommittee members prepare for the first meeting to be refining this list and making it in a logical order and be prepared to read every page in the proposed general plan document. In order to make this work, it really does mean not just hours of meetings, but I think it's going to mean a fair amount of homework on everyone's part to come to the meeting prepared. So my request of the council, and if you'd like to give any additional direction to the subcommittee, is that the list is quite long and it needs to be in a logical kind of building order of key fundamental questions first and then moving forward. And I think, again, I heard that sort of comment from everyone, but I just, I think it would be helpful if everybody's on the same page. It's a lot of work to accomplish in a relatively short time period. And returning to city councils sporadically in between that, I agree, I think three months can be a goal, but I think that this is pretty ambitious, given people's schedules and other commitments. I also will be looking at the first meeting to get clear on what the expectations of staff in terms of bringing additional and new information to the meetings, because that may not happen on a week-to-week basis, depending on what kind of information you all are looking for. So just, just expect that the first meeting is going to be a real work program schedule, detailed kind of meeting if we're going to accomplish what you all have set out to do.
Mr. Hotchkiss heard homework and then I saw his light go on, so I wanted-
Right. Excuse me. You're going to give us that list that you're preparing, correct? In advance?
Yes. Well, and this is just a starting point, because I don't think that the list that I wrote down actually includes everything that you want to discuss.
Right. And give it to us a few days in advance so we can really study it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think, you don't need a motion for this. I think you heard plenty of direction, right? This is just, yeah. That would be a long motion. Okay. We have one brief item. Do you need to take a break first and come back? Or do you want to just power through? All right? It's okay. Item number 14.
Item number 14, appointments to city advisory groups.
Okay, thank you. First, I'd just like, for those watching and find out afterwards, to thank all the applicants, especially for the Neighborhood Advisory Council. We were blessed with, again, a great wealth of expertise and interest. And to remind those that are not selected- that the whole point of the Neighborhood Advisory Council is to have a membership, but to encourage everyone who wants to participate to be able to participate. So, those who may not be selected or who couldn't make an interview, please don't think you can't come to meetings, that you can't be part of Subcommittee, or things like that. That is still open to you and anyone else who actually didn't apply and would like to still be involved. So, I'm very excited about this new Neighborhood Advisory Council. Let me suggest, let's, we have, well, let's, we have a suggested recommendation on how to proceed on the Neighborhood Advisory Council. But why don't we do the Fire and Police Commission first, since that's first in the alphabet? We have Diego Torres Santos, who's one vacancy and one applicant. I would like to move by acclamation, if we could.
So, move.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, go Diego. All right. So, Neighborhood Advisory Council, we have 13 slots and 21 eligible applicants. And there's a whole order of things. Now, I asked, and thank you Brenda, there's copies of the worksheet. If you want to use this, I have here it for you. I can pass around. But basically, to remind, what I would suggest is we focus first on the eight Neighborhood Representatives first, and look at that list, who qualify for the Neighborhood Representatives. You can nominate as many as you like. And then we'll try to get to eight. And anyone who's been nominated and left over will then be eligible for the at-large seat if they so choose, if we get four votes for them. And they would be added to anyone else that we would nominate in the at-large category. So, just to reiterate for now, let's just focus on the Neighborhood Advisory Council, the Neighborhood Representatives, which are eight of them. And just to remind ourselves when we vote that you can't have more than three in any one particular neighborhood. But for right now, I'll just entertain nominations from the Council, and as many as you'd like to nominate. Yep. You just say it, nominate and list a name.
I nominate Sebastian Aldana for the East Side.
Second.
No. Just, right now, we're just going to put names out there, and then we can decide from the nominations which eight we want to choose. Am I making sense?
Teresa Peña and Ana Soto.
Okay.
May I nominate, Madam Mayor?
You nominate as many as you like.
Sharon Byrne. West Downtown. Sally Foxon. Naomi Green, East Side. Javier Limón, Lower West Side. Bonnie Raisin, Laguna. Tony Vasallo, West Downtown. And then, none at large right now.
Yeah, we're not doing any more at large. Any other nominations?
Raquel Mendoza.
Okay.
Javier Limón.
I think we have that already, him already nominated. Any other nominations? Mr. House?
Dorothy Littlejohn. I think Raquel was already mentioned. Is Javier Moreno on the list?
Not nominated yet, no.
Okay, Javier. And Teresa Peña, she's on the list, I think. If not, I'll nominate her. You've got Soto. Is Diego Santos on your list, the list so far?
Yes, but we just appointed him to the Fire Police Commission, realize that.
Yeah, I do.
If you'd like to nominate him, you can.
I think, I'd like to see him in this group.
Okay.
Cesar Trujillo. Olivia Uribe.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay.
Did Sally Foxon get in there?
Yes.
Yes, she did. So, then, what, Brenda, if you could do the roll call. And what you'll be doing is voting for eight members, but no more than three in any one neighborhood. And we'll see if we can get four votes in any first round. Right? Right.
Okay.
Help Brenda out here. Okay. So...
Councilmember Francisco.
Sebastian Aldana. Sharon Byrne. Naomi Green. Javier Limón. Raquel Mendoza. Teresa Peña. Let's see. How many have I said?
You have six.
Six. Ana Soto and Tony Vasallo.
You have four in the East Side, though.
Do I?
Yep. So, if you want to move one from the East Side to someone else, you can do that.
This is complicated, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Well, gosh.
We have, there's...
Cesar Trujillo instead of, instead of Ana Soto.
Okay. Francisco, this might help you.
Okay. Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Hey. Sorry, thank you. Sebastian Aldana, who's the East Side. Sharon Byrne, West Downtown. Bonnie Raisin, Laguna. Tony Vasallo, West Downtown. Ms. Green, East Side. Foxon, Lower West Side. Javier Limón, Lower East Side. And Peña, East Side.
Okay. I think Javier Limón's Lower West Side. That's not correct. And Peña is East Side, right?
Lower West Side, correct. Thank you.
Okay.
But I think I made all my categories here.
Yes, you did. Okay.
Okay. Councilmember House?
I have nine people on my list. I've got to work that one over, just one second. Okay. Sebastian Aldana, from the East Side. Teresa Peña, from the East Side. And Ana Soto. And, actually, if you change, I apologize, Ana. Olivia Uribe, please, for my third choice.
Instead of whom?
Instead of Ana. And again, sorry, Ana. And Raquel Mendoza, Javier Moreno, and Diego Torres Santos. From, I apologize, skip Diego right now. So, Raquel and Javier. And then Sally Foxon and Javier Limón, Lower West Side. And one more, Cesar Trujillo, from Laguna.
That eight, Brenda? Okay.
Right.
Councilmember Rouse?
See if I can get this right. Sebastian Aldana for the East Side. Sharon Byrne for the West Downtown. Sally Foxon for Lower West Side. Javier Limón for Lower West Side. Naomi Green for East Side. Raquel Mendoza for West Downtown. Tony Vasallo for West Downtown. And Ana Soto for East Side.
Was that four, was that four on the East Side or three?
Three on the East Side, I think.
Councilmember Self?
Naomi Green. Teresa Peña. And Ana Soto. West Downtown. Sharon Byrne. Tony Vasallo. Lower West Side, Sally Foxon. Laguna, Bonnie Raisin, and Cesar Trujillo.
Is that eight?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Councilmember White?
East Side, Sebastian Aldana. Teresa Peña, Ana Soto. West Downtown, Sharon Byrne. Raquel Mendoza. Five. Lower West Side, Sally Foxon. Laguna, Cesar Trujillo. So, I have one more, is that right? And last one would be Tony Vasallo, West Downtown.
And Mayor Snyder?
Sebastian Aldana. Teresa Peña and Ana Soto. Sharon Byrne. Raquel Mendoza. Sally Foxon. Javier Limón. And Cesar Trujillo.
Oh, I see. Okay. I blew that one. Trujillo?
So, it appears that the East... Oh, I'll let Brenda, but if I can read it right, Brenda, you help me out. So, it looks like, if we look at most number of votes, for sure Sebastian Aldana got it. There were six votes. Teresa Peña got it, that was six votes. Sharon Byrne has one, that was six votes. And Sally Foxon has six votes.
Yes.
So, at the very, so just to start for sure, that they are, they should move forward, right?
Yes.
Okay. Can we all agree to that, since they all had six votes? Okay. And then, so now there are four more. And people who had, Raquel Mendoza had five votes, as did Javier Limón.
Yes.
And Tony Vasallo. Right?
Yes.
Does anyone else have five votes?
And also, Cesar Trujillo.
Sorry?
Cesar Trujillo.
Had five. Oh, I had him at six, but he had five. Okay. So, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. Is that right?
Where did Naomi Green come in?
Naomi Green had four votes.
I see. Okay.
So, just, it's Sebastian Aldana, Teresa Peña, Sharon Byrne, Raquel Mendoza, Tony Vasallo, Sally Foxon, Javier Limón, and Cesar Trujillo. Is that...
Correct.
Right? Okay. Now, that means, though, that the others who are nominated can still qualify now as an at-large member. So, that would mean, that would include Green. Littlejohn was nominated. Right? Yeah. Uribe was nominated. Moreno was nominated. Who else was nominated and didn't get? Soto was nominated, right? And Raisin. And I mentioned Uribe, right? Green, Littlejohn, Uribe, Moreno, Soto, Raisin. So, the other items, are there any nominations for the other non, you know, for other at-large applicants? Anyone else from the other list?
Yes. It includes the ones down below, right?
The ones down below. Anyone else you want to nominate?
Sally Kingston.
Sally Kingston.
Holly Walters.
Holly Walters. Anyone else?
Beatrice Molina.
Okay. I'd like to nominate Elvira Quiroga. She's been a longtime Lower West Side person. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Naomi Green.
She's already nominated.
She is, okay.
Yeah, so she's already eligible. So, we have Kingston, Molina, Quiroga, Walters, Waters, sorry, Green, Littlejohn, Uribe, Moreno, Soto, and Raisin. And of those, you get to vote for five. Everyone understand? Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Green. Kingston. Walters. Raisin. Only four votes.
Niki. Okay. Okay.
House?
Molina. Quiroga. Moreno. Soto. And, Uribe.
Rouse?
Green. Soto. Raisin. Walters. Kingston.
You mean Waters?
Walters.
Walters. Holly Walters.
Walters.
Oh, it's Walters, oh, it's Walters.
Fell wrong here.
My bad. Sorry. Got it.
Councilmember Self?
Green. Raisin. Waters.
All right. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Did I say Soto?
No.
So, I've got four there, and all, that's good.
Okay. Councilmember White?
Green. Uribe. Soto. Kingston. Molina.
And Mayor Snyder?
Kingston. Soto. Green. Quiroga. And Molina.
I'm sorry, and who?
Molina.
Green has five.
Well, Mr...
Wait a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Francisco has not voted yet.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Francisco?
Green. Soto. Kingston. Molina. Walters.
Okay.
If I read it right, you got that? Green and Soto both have six votes, so they should get to the five. Sally Kingston has five votes. And then, Molina and Walters both have four votes.
Right.
And that's five. Is that right?
Uh huh.
Did we do it?
You did it.
So, they, Sally Kingston, Beatrice Molina, Holly Walters, Naomi Green, and Ana Soto. We did it?
Correct.
Wow. Nice.
I'm marking it down here.
Sally Kingston.
Right.
Beatrice Molina.
Okay.
Holly Walters.
Okay.
Naomi Green. And Ana Soto.
And Kingston was she in there?
Yeah, that was the first one I mentioned.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Nice job, everyone. Then finally, the Rental Housing Mediation Task Force. Any nominations?
Sort of by acclamation.
Okay. Madam Mayor, by acclamation, please. Meredith Furman?
Okay. Second? Okay. Move, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was easier. Okay. Thank you. That concludes that piece. And finally, any quick Councilmember Committee assignment reports before we go to closed session?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Francisco.
I will make quick mention of a complicated mess at Combe. We had our meeting Monday afternoon. And it seems as if, at the moment, because there have been so many problems, in particular with Carpinteria's decision not to participate in the funding of a project, which is the first time that's ever happened, and some doubts among some of the other members. The so-called Second Barrel Project, a redundant pipeline, is in danger at the moment. And I suggested that we go ahead. The alternative proposal was to look at some other projects that would add up to about the same amount of grant money as we have to do this work. And that would also increase the reliability of the existing conduit. and that would also increase the reliability of the existing conduit. So I, I suggested that we go ahead and, and have staff look at those, but I'm still hopeful that we can somehow salvage the Second Barrel.
Thank you for your work on that. Anyone else? Just want to let Council know, I believe it's on the 10th of March, the Planning Commission is going to be looking at an, a, an amendment to a coastal development permit related to Highway 101 and the highway, the improvements there. There's a recommendation to change what's, what's being proposed around Salinas Street going northbound, which is right now an auxiliary lane, and actually make it into three lanes. It's gone through the design review team and ABR. There's been a lot of discussion and debate about landscaping that was promised with the original plan that, so, and it created, and it had a no vote at, at ABR. Since then, Caltrans has come back and, and made some changes to the plan, which they will be able to bring to the Planning Commission. That adds a bunch of landscaping to the area, it'll be explained at the Planning Commission. But just so you know, I had a meeting with members from Caltrans and SB CAG and city staff to go over those kind of things and just prepare for that Planning Commission meeting. So stay tuned for that. That's a big deal, and the Montecito Association, I know, has been instrumental part of this proposal as well. We have a closed session. Item 15.
Item number 15, conference with labor negotiator.
Okay. And we will adjourn from that closed session. There won't be anything to report. Thank you.